Welcome, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Okay, is this the American flag, Monica? All right, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll stand and the American flag is over there. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Ivanchits will lead us in a greeting.
Follow me. We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
We hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We feel your feelings.
We feel your feelings.
We are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
We honor that in you.
We honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together.
Thank you, Commissioner. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they would like to the agenda? Go ahead.
This would, if I could add up section 11, I'm sorry, Section 10, additional executive session item. So I propose to call it Section 10B as motion to go into executive session per Title I VSA Section 312 to discuss preparation for collective bargaining. An attorney, Joe McNeil, will be present. Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Fisher, all those in favor of adopting the agenda with the Item 10 article or Item B? I'll say aye.
Aye.
I believe, I don't know that we can warn a new totally different executive session topic at the meeting without the public, without, it wasn't warned?
Pretty sure we can, we can do that. I can call Joe if you want.
Yeah, no, we can ask him later. I just thought, it's more of a process question that that particular category of executive session wasn't warned, but we can ask him later.
If it's any consolation, we're not intending to take any action as a result?
Oh, that's the difference, yeah. Right, gotcha.
Great.
Okay, so did we vote?
No, we did not.
We did not yet. All right, so we will, all those in favor of adopting, adding, excuse me, Item B to Section 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Any abstention, the motion carries. The changes, next on the agenda is public comment. We have Kate Stein for public comment, and we'll use that microphone over there. Thanks, welcome, Kate. Sorry, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate. I'd like to take a moment to thank the community members, students, school board commissioners, and city councilors who have taken time out of their busy summer schedules to tour Burlington High School. For those of you who haven't gone on a tour, there's another one scheduled for Saturday at 9:00 AM, meet in the lobby. In addition, I would like to thank all the people who have worked on the re-envisioning since 2013 and before. I'd like to remind everyone that the recommendation brought to the board in April was a recommendation that met the design directives, fixed accessibility, and created space for modern pedagogy in addition to being fiscally responsible. I urge you, when taking into consideration on the three options that are being brought forth tonight, to think of the students who will benefit, how our community will benefit, how we have the opportunity to create an educational facility that attracts families to Burlington and is a shining star. Thank you.
Yep. There's only one. There's only one. We're done. Yes. I can give the chair's report.
We want to call and see if anybody else was.
Yes. Yep. Thank you, Kate. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? No?
Your mic's not plugged in.
I think they turned it off for now. No, I think they turned it off for now. Take your time, don't worry. Yep.
Oh, no, OSHA.
You step in the middle, don't step on the edge.
Let me take a picture of this.
Yeah, what's your certification?
Six years of karate.
I wasn't worried about you. I was worried about your spotter.
Okay, there we go.
As long as you don't go to sleep. I really appreciate the spot.
So we can't let the computer go to sleep?
Yes.
You guys hear that?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next time we have to do it, Shannon has a remote.
Oh, all right. You sure you got it?
I don't, but she does.
Test.
So this is, this is streaming?
I know, this one. Hello? Now is it on? It's okay, he'll get it to work.
You can just use my mic in the meantime.
Thank you. Test. Test.
Test, test.
Great.
Want to switch? Just switch.
I got it. We're good.
They're dying. Oh, it was off.
Now it's on, okay. Thank you. Good? Good? That's okay, he's doing a great job, thank you. We are very appreciative of Jeff's work. Our goal was to hold these meetings at BHS so that we had time throughout the year to come visit the high school and support the work of our re-envisioning committee. So ten minutes out of schedule to get things right, we're very appreciative of Retton and all your cabling, so thank you. We appreciate being here. So board reflection on, next on the agenda after public comment, seeing that there was no other, do any board members wish to reflect on public comments? Yes, Commissioner Curry?
I'm not reflecting on public comment, but Senator Ash sent me a text just saying that he can't make the meeting, but he's very interested in the contamina issue, contamination issue on Elmwood. And he's been in touch with leadership at DEC and Health Department, and it's just ready to be of assistance in any way if you want to contact him if there's anything that comes up. I wasn't sure if we were receiving an update from DEC tonight or not.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Carey?
I would just like to comment overall, make an overall comment about where I've been the last couple of weeks in terms of co-chair of the Personnel Committee and the Curriculum Committee. And it's been very interesting, once again, to work with Kathy Alwell, my co-chair, and to meet with some teachers and to meet with district leadership regarding curriculum, and then gather information about personnel in the district. So that I see as my two charges right now, and it's been very, very interesting. And I can't quite explain the complexity of the system as it's being revealed to me. And I know it's tricky to run a district, and I appreciate the knowledge of the superintendent and everything that he has in his head about employing over a thousand. I've gathered information about the numbers of employments, of employees here, there are over a thousand employees in our district. And I'll talk more about that a little bit later. But I'm in awe of the complexity that we face and the attempts that we're making as a board to direct that needed impetus to move forward. So, you know, I prepared with Kathy, my co-chair, two resolutions for tonight, and you're going to hear about them later. One has to do with personnel, one has to do with curriculum. The bottom line is, we have fabulous students, we have fabulous schools, we have great teachers, and I want to make sure that we continue in a positive direction regarding education, teaching and learning in the district. And I'll stop it there. I just wanted to make that general statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. All right. Seeing no other board reflection, I'll just comment on Commissioner Curry. We have, as a district, Superintendent Obang and our communications specialist been working with the mayor's office, the Vermont Department of Health, and communicating to our BSD community. Test results were coming out yesterday, and we wanted a full report before attempting to report half of it here tonight. But thank you, and thank you for your communication over the past four days, Commissioner Curry. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the focus of learning.
Thank you, Chair. Focus on learning, just to remind people, the focus on learning was initially placed on the agenda as an opportunity for us to share some of the complexities of the system from an operational perspective. So I want to thank Commissioner Carey for acknowledging the dynamics that happen within our district is quite challenging. And also, I'll also make a quick comment around the chemical situation. Our staff have been working very closely with all the appropriate agencies, and I know that their updates are coming forward, and Marty and his staff are always on forward. If there was any sort of critical emergency, we would have disclosed that from our end already by this time, so.
Thank you.
So with that, let me move into one of the things, as we start the new year, I thought it would be prudent for us to do an update around early ed from Stacy Curtis in terms of, in light of the challenges that she has, and also, Stacy's a great problem solver, so she's been able to keep the program moving forward in a dynamic way. So this is a quick update, just to let you know the status, how we're entering into the year, and we'll continue to work on the different challenges that we have throughout the course of year. And I know Stacy will be coming back to the board at some point through me to look for some support for that early education program.
Thanks for having me. So I just prepared a short, can you hear me?
You can move it closer to you, Stacy.
Okay. Hear me now? So I just prepared a short report around our current status, and right now, just wanted to report out where we're at at this current point. The slide's going to move. Okay, there we go. So currently, we have 158 students enrolled in our eight classrooms. We have 14 on our waitlist, and we have 316 children enrolled and registered through early learning partners. And just a reminder, we have 47 of those. So right now, we're at a total of 488, and I just wanted to remind everyone that this is a rolling number, and so it changes throughout the school year. So we're right on trend of where we've been the last two years. So our trends do predict that we'll be having about 100 more students in our classrooms and about 150 more that will register through ELPs throughout the year. So that's from, we have a rolling thing, so it goes all the way through June 30th. So as children turn three, and last year, we did have 48 children on IEPs transitioning into our program, some that we know about ahead of time and some that just move into town and surprise us. So some of the current restraints, constraints that I know you have all heard about, it's just our space in general. We don't have enough of it. Waitlist, we have eight classrooms currently and continue to have the waitlist. We have staff that are isolated across four separate buildings, some of which are the only preschool in the building, and they're not supervised by the principal. So that can be, they're just on their own little island. So that makes supervision and support of those 50 staff spread across four sites challenging, and needing to move one classroom from Flynn for next school year. So there's some space constraints in the K-5 realm, and so Graham Clark, before he retired, did let me know that three years ago in hopes that we would be moving in a direction we're removing anyways. But I did check in with him and the new principal, and that is still for next year, we will need to move one of those classrooms. And I just want to share that that's not an easy task. So this summer, I spent four months, Marty and his team helping to support the fire marshal, to get two additional preschools added to Flynn took four months. So to re-license a new classroom is really challenging, and to continue to do that year after year is really time-consuming and takes apart from supervision and support of my staff and families, so. So this year, what we're going to continue to do is I'm going to continue to move across those four settings and support my staff and teaching teams as best I can. For storage, we purchased a shed. Marty's trying to help me figure out if we can get another shed at Flynn, maybe. We are continuing to work with our early learning partners to help reduce waitlists in Burlington, so there's a group of us that meet and talk about, you know, who's on the waitlist, is there children that are on multiple waitlists that are the same that we can prioritize? We work with Howard Center, King Street, Burlington Children's Base, so all those early learning partners are in on this discussion of the shared waitlist, and there is a discussion about could we move to that eventually? And then, shared resources and the same schedule, so trying to just be more mindful of can we, instead of having to purchase materials, and could we share them across sites? It does prove challenging if, as a teacher, you have consumables and you run out of paper and you're not part of the building. We're essentially kind of paying a rent to those principals and buildings for those building supplies because we're responsible for supplying our own, so. So looking forward and kind of trying to have that positive look on what can we do, we obviously like to continue the discussion around consolidating those preschool sites to provide a more permanent home, looking at expanding our space to accommodate the current needs that we have in the district, looking at reorganizing staff to provide more support and supervision and more sustainable, and just continuing to work with the leadership team and the community to gain the insight of how preschool can help us to close that achievement gap. Because I think we're beyond the research, we all know that that is where we want to start, so.
Thank you, Stacy. Any quick questions, or?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the extended day grant. Could you talk about that program and how long it'll be around and what kind of costs it's supporting in the district?
Yes. So I have been in conversations with Nathan and our leadership team and Yao that are, and I shared with you all last year, that the PD EG grant, the preschool expansion grant, will be ending this school year. So that runs two of our classrooms, and what that means is it supports two teachers and two paras. And that is how we are supplying two full-day classrooms for four-year-olds. So if that, those classrooms were to close, we would be at six classrooms and our waitlist would be an additional, probably 32 children, because they each house 16 four-year-olds. But that is ending this year.
So you mean, next year, we'll have to eliminate?
Yes.
Six classrooms from the pre.
Two.
Two classrooms.
To bring us to six. We currently have eight.
To bring us to six, we're at eight.
Yes.
Okay, so where are the, you don't know where those would be, there's no, how would you make the decision about which classrooms to close?
We would look at probably, we wouldn't want to necessarily, we prioritize four-year-olds, so it wouldn't be that. It would be more about absorbing it and looking at how would we spread it out with only six classrooms. So it would be a huge deficit for the community, I think, to lose those 32 slots, but I have been talking to Nate, and it'll be part of what I'm asking for, for early ed, is to sustain what we have.
So we're not giving? You mean, asking for in next year's budget?
For the following school year, yes, when I have.
On the general fund?
Yes.
So this is kind of what people predicted about the state paying for pre-K, eventually having to be absorbed by the taxpayer in the general fund budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. So, yeah, so clearly, I think Stacy's ringing the alarm that we will have to continue to increase our support to pre-K, but we're not giving up. We're, you know, we, the last thing we really want to do is reduce the opportunities for our communities to send their kids to pre-K. We know that every dollar we spend at that level is going to be $10 down the road, so we're going to continue to explore other grants and other strategies and go forward, but, you know, we may end up having to include that into our budget as well, too.
And what's the cost per slot?
Currently, for Act 166, we pay $3,148, I believe, somewhere in that range.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
So thanks for your presentation, and judging by some of the things in your first couple of slides, I still get the idea that you want a centralized pre-K, and I see how on the side of the teachers perhaps that would be advantageous. But I know there's an expert in Vermont by the name of Val Gardner who teaches a class on schools and community.
Yes, I took that class.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
But there's really great value in having pre-Ks in the community so that parents can just walk their kids to school and get that, you know, one-on-one with the teachers at the beginning and the end of the day. So I guess I'm wondering, why are we still looking forward to a centralized pre-K for the whole Burlington?
Well, it's my understanding in meetings with our leadership is that we don't really have that space in the elementary schools, that we've been at a space constraint, hence why we're being asked to leave Flynn. So I think if that's a conversation we want to have, we could look at that. I think it would just, it'd be a big shift from where we've been going. And for pre-K and centers, we also have been looking at it from younger than three, so even for parents to look at it as a hub and knowing a central location for our families to say, hey, that's where we go for Head Start information, that's where we go for information around opiate use, that's where we partner with communities. So it's almost like a community center for early ed, so I think you could look at it either way, but I do value Val Gardner, I think she's amazing, so.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think that we should look at it, I know it's a philosophical discussion.
Yeah.
But I think we should consider both ways.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Barlow?
Isn't that also a financial consideration, not just a philosophical one? I mean, we're talking about the budgetary pressures that we have.
Yes.
Central is, is centralized pre-K less expensive than a distributed model?
Yes, I believe so.
Thanks.
And Commissioner Curry?
And do all families get to walk now, or what proportion would you say get to walk versus have to use the transportation we provide?
No, more than 50% use our transportation from BSD.
So we don't have an equitable situation now where people get to walk?
No, we don't.
Thank you.
So let me conclude by saying thank you, Stacy, and also the, just talking about schools and the needs of schools, those are challenged, and in preschool, there are a number of limitations that we have. Like, you know, there are things that we'd like to do, but we know we just don't have the physical space or the dollars to do it, so we have to come up with strategies that could sort of meet us halfway in terms of supporting our students. So Stacy's been one that's been able to do that, even though her ideal may be here, but she's always looking for strategies to try to get to the best possible for our communities. So thank you, Stacy, for doing that.
Thanks so much.
And let you go and spend some time with your family.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So our next item under learning focus was around elementary staffing, and we want to give you a quick little bit overview. I know some of you've seen this before, if you've been following the board, and those who've been on the board have heard us go through this, but we would like to kind of go through that process again and explain how we do the allocations. Victor?
Okay. Is that on? Can you hear me over there? Thanks. Hi, everybody. Yes, Yao asked me to come today to just look at where we are from when I last met with you, I think it was in June at Champlain. And just before I even go to those slides there, at that meeting, we were talking about some FTEs, full-time equivalencies, meaning full teaching positions that we have not yet allocated, or spent, if you would, for elementary school. And one of those positions was being held in case we need to add another kindergarten class, and a couple more, we were really waiting to see sort of where enrollment lands between then and even into September, so that's why I'm here tonight. So this is a refresher slide, this same slide was used before. So the process starts by using December enrollment, and this is for building the budget, and projecting where we're going to be K-12 for the following year, so it's based on the kids who are already here and assuming we'll have roughly the same number of kindergarteners the next year. We always look for potential consolidation of classes within a given grade for the following year, so for example, we might end up with two classes of 15 ki, or sorry, three classes of 15 kids each in, let's say, third grade classroom. It wasn't by design, but that's just where the numbers ended up, and maybe those classes have been shrinking over time, and so we look at combining those and making two classes of 22 or 23 in third grade, and so we capture that FTE that we can then use elsewhere in another school, or even within that school for something else. Mentioned predicting how many kindergarten classrooms will be needed, and then from there, I sit down with principals and with the superintendent and with Nathan about making recommended staffing allocations based upon projected enrollment and using an equity index, which is looking at free and reduced lunch and EL. So this is where we were as of the beginning of summer. We are pretty close to this right now. We're having some glitches in our student database system right now, and so rather than try and go one by one and try and figure out those mistakes, we're going to be wholesale fixing those. These numbers might have shifted by a tenth or two tenths of a decimal point, but those are pretty accurate where we're going to be starting in September, or first day of school on August 29th. And so if you just look at that, just looking at pure student-teacher ratios, we can see that IAA has the highest student-teacher ratio in the district for next year, followed by Edmonds, Champlain, et cetera, going all the way down to SA and Flynn. And so that's homeroom teachers per student. Yep, go ahead, Mike. Oh, yeah, those, so those are guidelines that we use as a district. We try and stay below, at 22 or below in K-2, up to 23 in Grade 3, Grade 4 up to 24 and Grade 5 up to 25. The AOE allows us to go higher than that, and those are averages, so it's really important to remember that. So we try and keep that average size in every single classroom in those grade sets, but in some schools, you might have a slightly higher ratio in one grade set and then lower in another one. But that's what we aim for, and as you can see by the ratios that actually come to fruition, we don't meet those.
Thank you for that question, because one of the things you've heard in the last couple of years, data information coming from the AOE around class ratios and class size, and their threshold is much higher than what we hold. So if they were to exercise their authority and say, all schools, then it would be a considerable shift for us in terms of what we're providing right now.
Yeah?
Are those student-teacher ratios based solely on enrollment or equity index?
No, those are actual, those are kids divided by the number of homeroom teachers in a school. So in other words, like, IAA has 12 classroom teachers, regular classroom teachers, as an example.
And you said that the equity index that is used at BSD is based on free and reduced lunch and English language learners?
And EL, yes, yes.
Is that the state formula for that?
No, the state formula doesn't do that. The state has a formula that they use to sort of determine EL staffing, but that's how that's used, so I don't.
They don't really have an equity.
They don't have an equity. I mean, we're calling it the same thing, they're two different things, if that makes any sense.
We've been in, actually, Commissioner Barlow has led the charge the last couple of years, we've been lobbying the state to change their formula in a way that would be supportive of our needs and other districts' needs, because they picked up some arbitrary sort of mechanisms in terms of calculating needs, and we've asked for them to review that, and we were almost halfway there, and I'm not sure what's going to happen now with all the, with all the changes, but that is a piece.
Doesn't the district have to report using the state formula?
We do.
For reimbursement?
We do.
We do.
But that's reimbursement.
We add on top of what we receive, right? So we're committing more, we're committing more resources than the state standard, right? If we were to go to the state standard, the numbers would look different.
Can I just add, I think there could be a little confusion in that, I think what Commissioner Carey might be asking about is the equalized pupil formula the state uses. If so, that is a formula the state uses that is set in statute and gives extra weight to students that are English learners and extra weight to students that are in poverty, but it also weights students who are secondary students, and it applies different weights to each of those categories. So we use some of the same types of information to create the equity index, but we didn't So we use some of the same types of information to create the equity index, but we didn't apply the same weights, for example. And we obviously didn't put in the secondary, wouldn't have any impact on decisions like the elementary staffing.
Thank you, that helps.
You know, I understand that confusion because the state does use that term and we're using the same term in a different way.
Just said, I'm understanding that BSD uses a different formula. That's it.
Well, because we're using it for something totally different. They're deciding how much money to give us per kid. We're using for it to think about how do we get more equitable within our staffing within each of our schools.
But it doesn't include IEPs, for example.
It does not. It could, and that's something, our equity index is in flux. This is the second year we've used it and we met with principals in the spring of last year and agreed that we were going to spend some time working with a group of them this coming year to make it in a way that we feel is more effective and more reflective of the full student body.
But isn't that because, it doesn't include IEPs because that has its own funding stream and ratio requirements, right? So it just gets more complex.
Yeah, well, there's layers to it, right? So because we have, our Student Support Services Director also does an allocation for special ed needs based on each school. So she would take her, she would look at five of our fours, IEPs and other special needs and say, your school has these needs, so you're going to get this allocation. Our ELL director does the same based on her formula and says, you need this. This is just for the general allocation. We've decided that we want to include special ed and EL in our general allocation. So that's where we created the equity index to say, okay, we don't want to just think about just the general, but we're also going to include some of the other pieces that come into it that are challenging for our staff and put that into the formula as well, too. So it's, we've counted it twice. We've made sure we've counted for that piece, right?
So Steve, one is for compliance? And if we just use the ratios for compliance, we would have fewer staff. What the equity index does is kind of say, okay, well, our district wants to support the students more. And so the principals get together and talk about the higher needs that they have in each school and kind of work with the index to have a conversation that is never perfect because then in September, as we know, families will move into one district and all of a sudden it throws everything out of whack and one principal needs more staffing. But if we didn't have the resources, you know, that need can't be met.
And the formula is in flux always in Burlington? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, the numbers are.
We've only used it for two years.
We've used it for two years. We've been consistent with using that, but we always continue to have the conversation with administrators and say, okay, is it working or, you know, does it need to be refined? My approach, when I first arrived here, I said, let's do an equity index. And the way I've done it in the past is you take the base, you do the equity piece, but then you also have a conversation afterwards because sometimes it may just not be getting it right, even though you've got a formula and you put it in. And so at our systems leaders, we have that conversation in terms of where were we? And I think last year, was it last year, when the principals got together and had that conversation, allocation was supposed to go to another school based on the numbers and the principals agreed, well, no, based on what we know, we think that that person should get it instead. And so we need that layer of conversation. So that's what prompts us to say, okay, how do we have the conversations continue to improve the strategy to allocations? Because there's always going to be some debate over, you know, where should we put this? Where should we put that? But we want to minimize that. We can get to a formula that minimizes that, so we're not looking at four or five areas, we're looking at one or two. That's a better conversation that we can kind of address as opposed to saying, oh, everyone's needs are not being met, then that means you've got to redo the formula altogether.
The reason I'm asking is that Kathy and I have had this discussion many times about what is the equity index? And we've heard presentations several times and neither of us really understands it. So I guess we're going to ask at some point that it be put in writing so we can clearly understand exactly how the numbers are determined in Burlington. That's all.
Yep.
Okay, great, super.
Yeah, and just so you know, I'm looking at a slide from 2016 that says that the formula is based on English learners, students living in poverty, which I assume means free and reduced lunch and students with IEPs. So if it's, it would be nice if it's changed from that model for us to have it and publish it and talk about it and so forth.
I think it's more process, Martine, because I sent that out.
Yes, you did.
And so if you look at the, you know, I know we don't have time to get into this now, but if you look at the chain, it's like the IEP thing comes, first there's enrollment, then there's the IEP layer, and then after that, there's another layer of going, looking at the other kind of non-data-based impacts of all the needs.
We have, I know when we first started, we have, we started out with all the variables, right? And then said, okay, what works was the easiest way. And that's what Victor is saying, that we continue to look at that, have conversations with our principals and say, okay, what makes the most sense, right? Because, you know, you'll get, when you look at IEPs, you know, some administrators might come forward and say, well, we're kind of behind in IEPs. We really have this many kids that are, but we haven't gone through the process. And so you have that debate, so it's kind of always in a bit of a flux. But we've had two years of experience with it, so now our principals have enough education with it to say, hey, let's look at it, let's try doing this. It'll help us to make decisions a little bit better going forward. We'll be sure to update you on that process in terms of what it looks like as we move forward.
Nathan also just pointed out to me that that slide there, Liz, may in fact be a slide that has to do with the supplies allocation and not necessarily the equity allocation we're talking about for staffing in an elementary school. So I think this just points exactly what Steve said, what Stephen said, which is it would be great to have, and Martine, a presentation that sort of spells this out. So rather than us going back into history now and saying, I'm not sure what slide that is, that type of thing.
And it's important because resources are allocated based on that.
Oh, it isn't, I'm not disagreeing with you that it's not important. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'll say that having a formula to start with is a good thing because resources are allocated previously by who wants, who needs. Okay, I think you should get, Mark, because I like you, or Mike, you should get, right? But now we have something to actually talk about and say, this is why you should get it, as opposed to the most compelling story or, you know, to do that. So anyways, great.
Next slide, please.
Oops, how'd that happen? Sorry. I lost it. Sorry.
That's okay. So now we're at the this year piece of things. So Sustainability Academy actually kept one equity allocation from the previous year. So last year, they had received an equity allocation that got split up between, I believe, different portions that add up to 1.0, special ed, EL and PE. And they continue to have that. So they've received one of the equity allocations already. We would like to, Yao would like to allocate an additional FTE to IAA based on the equity index and the highest homeroom class size averages. So the evidence that's in there, if we use just the equity index, they clearly, they actually should be receiving two FTEs. But Bobby recognizes that there's needs in other places in the district and he recognizes that the one would really make a big difference and have an impact on his school. And then we would like to wait for final numbers and composition of each class for mid-September to give us some real data of not what we think is coming into the school, but what's actually coming into the school. And then be able to get input from all six elementary principals to say, how do we want to allocate those final two? In theory, that could include opening up another section of kindergarten. I would be shocked if we're going to need another section of kindergarten. But as I spoke in June and I think in January, past practice in our district until about three years ago was spend everything, allocate everything before the school year starts and then have principals, teachers, administrators, the superintendent ask to spend more and go into deficit mode. And my understanding from this board and previous boards, we don't want to go back to that. And so by holding on to two of them until mid-September, it would give us that opportunity to give us some flexibility about where to spend those and involve the principals in that process and have real data.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment or a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Fisher?
So thank you for that information. What's interesting to me is that Principal Riley said, it's okay, I don't need you to, right? So we, Superintendent Oberg, you talked about, hey, it shouldn't just be, hey, I like Bobby better than, you know, the new principal at Flynn, so I'm going to give him an extra, right? So we have this equity index that figures out mathematically, objectively, where to put the resources. And yet you just told me that a decision was made about not adding headcount by a person. So I'm struggling with understanding, is the equity index a guideline? Who makes the decision really, right? Because we have parents and staff who are asking these questions. We're asking these questions. How does staff get increased or reduced?
Well, yeah, hopefully you weren't confused. I think you're referring back to what Victor said about the allocation to IOA, IAA. If we were to look at the formula, we would directly give IAA two positions, right? The principal there is saying, I really need one, that would be great, because they understand that there are other needs in the system and they want us to be supportive of their colleagues. So I'm okay with that. If a principal tells me, hey, I can get two, but one for now is okay and I can make it work, then that's fine because we have probably four other administrators saying, I need, I need, I need, and the data is there to support. So if we can share that other allocation, then I would be supportive of that. I wouldn't sort of say, no, you have to take two if they're saying, yeah, I want to be able to support my colleagues.
So I'm okay with that as long as we're consistent as a district, a year to year and situation to situation. If you're telling me and you're telling the board and the community, the decisions are made by the building leaders collaboratively, is that what you, the final, the equity index informs that decision? But really, decision-making is them as a group and you?
Yep, absolutely. So as you noticed there, our last step for the last two in mid-September, when we have our systems leaders, Victor and I will look at the data again and say, hey, look, this is what's coming from the administrators. And when we have our meeting, we'll say, hey, this is what it looks like. We think so-and-so should get the next two allocations, this school. And then they can have the conversation in terms of, yeah, that's right and we think that feels good and make that happen. It wouldn't be in my purview and it wouldn't be in my interest to say, you know, school B is going to get it no matter what. I'd want our administrators to say, yeah, this is what works. I mean, they're the ones that are going to have to staff the schools and deliver the program at the end of the day, you know? We give some direction and some guidelines around that and try to hold people around the parameters, but at the end of the day, they're going to have to, as collectively as a group, live with those decisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Wick?
Oh, thanks. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep.
This question may be for Victor, just to help me understand. What I think I heard was, we're going to hold back a little bit of potential capacity until mid-September to see what the real needs shake out to be. And I presume if there are real needs, and you said something about adding a kindergarten or you'd be surprised, but in any event, at least thinking back in my experience as a parent at elementary schools, I'm just trying to think how that works. I haven't seen that work personally, but my experience is limited. For example, at Champlain, I haven't heard of mid-September after the kids have gotten settled in and the teacher's set up his or her classroom and all of a sudden you're suggesting, okay, kids, you're now with this new teacher.
No. I can understand how you would think that, no. What's happened just about every year is we might add a full-time EL teacher or a full-time special education teacher or another person who's sort of in an interventionist type role. I mean, different roles and usually pieces of it, generally not a whole person. So there might be someone who's, I'll make it up, a .6 EL teacher at a school. And what's clear is that we really need to bump that up to a 1.0, so we put .4 there. But what I've seen in past practices, that's all deficit spending, which gets us into real trouble.
Right, but at least now I'm understanding that you're not considering adding a classroom teacher in mid-September.
Though there are schools that do that.
Yeah, well, you know what? That happens. That happens. And I would say that I wouldn't restrict our administrators to use the allocation as best as they see it in their situation, because you may have one school that says, yeah, you know what, I got a long-term teacher that's been coming here and she can easily take half of the kids and we can have a class. We've got another school that may not even have the space. They can't create a classroom, so they're going to have a co-teaching model, right? So I would say that I wouldn't take anything off the table, off any tools off the table for administrators, once they got the allocation to say, okay, how best are you going to service your students based on your building? Because all the buildings are different and the facilities are different, right? But what Victor described is what typically happens, but I wouldn't say that, you know, I would rule out any other, you know, ideas that come forward, right?
I get it and thank you. It just, that understanding helps me, I think, with a resolution we'll be considering later tonight relating to classroom teachers. So thank you.
I have a question, too.
Commissioner Carey.
So I don't still understand, and I wish I could. So I gleaned some figures from the district spreadsheet regarding total enrollment and the equity index adjustments as of August 2nd. And I put them on a piece of paper and I figured that, I looked at the ratio of equity index divided by enrollment. And I looked at three schools, SA, IAA and Flynn. And it's clear, it's very clear, that SA, the ratio of the equity index to total enrollment, it's clear that SA is of greatest need.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
When you say equity index, are you talking about the state or ours?
Yours. Which includes, it includes ELL, it includes IEPs, the one that you use.
And includes free and reduced lunch.
Yes, I, yes. I saw the spreadsheet, the district spreadsheet, that had the totals of all the schools and the equity index adjustments.
The one you emailed around? I couldn't send it to Carson.
Yeah, I just sent that to Carson.
That we produced, you mean, that we produced?
Yes, yes.
What's the date on that?
August 2nd. Now, since August 2nd, enrollment at SA has changed by two. Yeah, I have a hard copy, too. It's gone up by two. SA, I don't know about the other schools in terms of enrollment.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah.
This says statewide formula on it.
No, that was a question. I was just using this as a teaching tool. I was going to ask the question that I've already asked. I wanted to know if that was the statewide formula, you've already answered it. And you've already answered, is there another method used at BSD? And the answer is yes, there is. So that's not the statewide formula. The numbers indicate the equity index that this district uses. And that's why I'm puzzled. When you say IAA needs two, it's clear that SA is the school of the three, although every school needs more services delivered to them. It's clear that SA is the one that has the most need as of August 2nd.
Honestly, Steve, I would love to understand even what this data is. But, so all I can do is tell you that what you would need to know is you would need to know how many teachers are already in that school, how many students receive EL services. And I would need to see that in a spreadsheet. How many receive IEP services? How many qualify for free and reduced lunch? Because that, that's an aggregate group of numbers there and I wouldn't even want to begin to understand what that means. Like, I don't even know what it means of ratio of EL to total.
All right, with the total enrollment of the numbers of students in the schools, the equity index row is the adjustment made to the total enrollment based on the equity formula. And yes, it's weird. It's very strange that the equity index could be higher than the enrollment and that's because of the needs of the individual students. It's strange that it could be, the ratio is lower than one and that had in, on Flynn. And that's because kids are evaluated apparently at less than 1.0 at some point to form the equity index. So it's a puzzle to me, why IAA seems to be, you say it needs two. It's not, that's not at all clear from this information. And again, this is simply total enrollment and then equity index adjustments that the district uses.
Point of order, could we please either refer this to committee? Clearly, there are people talking about data without the context for being able to compare these numbers, trying to have a conversation at an inappropriate time. So I'd just like to refer this to committee, please. Curriculum Committee, Superparent Data.
Yeah, thank you. Just in conclusion, I'd love for you to send that spreadsheet to us because it'd be interesting to, you got, okay, good. And we would, we would take the opportunity that And we would, we would take the opportunity that you've invited for us to come back and share the formula and how we utilize it. Because it is utilized, I mean, we also use it for budget allocation for each school. There's different, so sometimes people are looking at a different formula for a different purpose as well. And as I said before, ELL director uses a formula to allocate, and our special ed director uses it as well, too. So probably having a full overview and saying, "This is what we use exactly," then we could all be talking from the same document. That would be helpful, right? And we'd be, and we'd be open to, for any suggestions around improving that, and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and I would just ask that, if there is a, that's not a spreadsheet. That's a series of a few numbers. So if there's an actual spreadsheet that helps me understand where those numbers come from, that would be helpful.
Well, you have, you would show that to me, because that's what you have, with all the numbers.
I mean, from August 2nd.
Yeah, okay. Where did you get your numbers from?
Where'd you get your numbers? Just, well, I have a source.
Let's, let's do a point.
Okay.
Transparent source, right?
I have a source.
It was one of our documents. You got it from someone else.
That's it.
No, it was, it was from an employee.
All right, so I think what we have all decided, that we will work with our committees as such. Curriculum Committee, the Science Committee, you're a co-chair, and we'll move on. Thank you, Victor, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, the agenda to the chair's report. As we come to a close this summer, we wanna express our thanks to all our building personnel, faculty, and staff for a successful school year. We didn't have that opportunity in June because school was still in session, and we did take the month of July off from the board meeting to enable faculty and district leaders and school commissioners to work independently. The detailed work involved and the leadership of our district offices and schools who contributed to our school year comes to a close, July of 2018, a financial close. And I know Nate and his team are working on the FY '17, '18 operating school year budget that we'll report out in September and through the fall. And we recognize the tremendous amount of work over the summer, especially our SOAR program, all our faculty members and staff and students that participated. We had the opportunity this July, commissioners went to those sites and observed the incredible work that our district puts forth in the summer for learning opportunities for our community. So thank you to all those educators and families and students that participated in it. And then we also wanna thank our food service. We served this summer our students throughout the district, distributed in different areas of the city, and we recognize the hard work. And a lot of the DHS students that were employed distributing that food, working for the district and the school. And we wanna thank them for their efforts. And lastly, we are coming upon the school year in less than two weeks, and we recognize the tremendous amount of work that goes into preparing for the new 2018, '19 school year. And our board as a whole will focus on universal collaboration. Despite our sharing right now, here and then, the goal is to collaborate and to work together and ask questions, support oversight, especially with our new committees. So the conversations that happen here evolve, but again, it is essential that those conversations continue through committee work. So we recognize the patience that you all have sitting here, having these conversations. And though they might feel a little awkward, that's how we evolve as a board, to ask those questions. And now we have a place for them in our committee work. So thank you for supporting that. Next Tuesday as well will be our first Community Engagement Committee meeting, Thursday? I meant, excuse me, Thursday. And Tuesday, we will have another meeting that we'll discuss and announce as a board. And those will be on a monthly basis, engaging all levels, the board, administration, staff, faculty, students, their families, and the greater Burlington community. So we welcome those opportunities for engagement. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. So Superintendent Hoppin, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Well, we've been talking a bit about curriculum and instructional coaches, and I think that the board requested an update and some information around what our programming strategies are, and also deeper learning around instructional coaches and what that means. So this is a continuous, ongoing education for us and for you as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to our team we have. We have staff from Central Office, as well as some of our coaches, as well as school-level staff tonight. So over to Stephanie Phillips.
Great, thank you. So as Yao just mentioned, we are here to give you a little bit of an update, to review some of the information that we've shared in the past as far as our perspective on our coaching model and the research that we've done. And then you're going to get to hear from both Colleen Cowell, who's here as a district coach, and Meg McDonough, who's here as the Edmonds Middle School principal, to share some of their perspectives around instructional coaching. And we also have some clips from some teachers who were not able to join us this evening. So I'll just start by referencing the graphic that we have. So this is a new graphic that Yao has introduced to the administrative team, and we're using this as part of our work this year to really be thinking about systems alignment. So thinking about our direction, the collaboration, the leadership that's involved, and how we're building capacity. So we're using this in our work as part of our systems leaders team, and taking that to the other work that we do in the district, including using that with our initiatives like restorative practices and instructional coaching, all which is working toward our strategic plan initiative around closing the achievement gap. Also, just for quick reference, at the bottom of the slide, the instructional coaching piece that we're gonna talk about tonight, there were two other times in the past year that, in conversations either around a monitoring report or around the strategic plan, that we talked about the work that we're doing around instructional coaching and how we're using that as one of our strategies towards closing the achievement gap. Carson, thank you. So we're, we are, we just have a few slides here. Just, these are a reminder, and we've touched upon this in previous slideshows that we've done for you, but really just to remind folks that the instructional coaching model that we are pursuing, we've spent time starting two years ago, and then again, last year, and we're continuing our work as we go into this year to really think about the instructional coaching from a research perspective. So we've had the opportunity to work with some great organizations, including the Education Development Center, who we connected with through Nellie May, who's connected us to some of their work, and work through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and other groups to really help us frame this so that we know that we're launching a coaching model that's really rooted in best practice and one that we can implement and continue to collect information and data around our successes. So again, just a couple of additional pieces of research that we've been able to get as part of our work. As I mentioned, we have a strong partnership with the Education Development Center, also with Brandeis University. And so they're continuously putting us in touch with folks who are doing research studies and continuing to go back and follow that research to make sure that we're thinking about all the pieces that will help us build a successful model. And this comes from some research that we have followed from the Alliance for Education over time that really speaks to the work that we're trying to do in building teacher quality and having collaboration, and how that can really help us as we move forward with our work connected to the achievement gap. I'm gonna now let Colleen talk for a few slides. Colleen has been a teacher in the district for several years and has been part of our coaching team for a number of years, and continues to take the lead on much of the work that we do, especially with our new teachers in the district.
Hi. I don't know if this is on. I usually don't need this. I don't even know if it's on.
Is it working?
I don't think it's working.
Oh, yeah.
Try not to yell. I have a very loud voice, says it is. So I'm really happy that we are going toward instructional coaching. I've been teaching in this district for over 30 years, and then became a coach, and have been a science content coach, but feel like the instructional coaching model is gonna be working with every teacher and really improving our tier-one model, which is, if you're looking at research, if we have to affect our first and best instruction to begin with, and that's in the classroom, and the teacher is the most important person in your child's life. So, you know, as instructional coaches, we're gonna be bringing best practices. We're gonna be co-teaching. We're gonna be modeling in classrooms. We're gonna hopefully embed great professional development, because we've been lucky to have professional development over the last few years with the coaching. And we started using video in our classrooms so teachers could really reflect on their teaching, and we can go from there. I think there's many benefits to the coaching model. Again, I, when I was a teacher, I used the coaches in the district. I used the Jane Millers and the Karen Vogels and Penny Sterns, and probably improved my instruction every time they were in my classroom, and saw my student growth using what I've learned from them. So we hope to focus on best practices in the classroom, connect colleagues with one another. It's really important that we work together and we're not working alone, provide, you know, fresh outside perspective from what we've learned, some personal learning. And as a coach, this is nonevaluative support. I am a teacher, and I am working with the teachers as a teacher. Our goals, we hope, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, this is all gonna be oriented and data-driven. We're gonna use it with PLCs. We're gonna collect data so you can see the outcome of this model. We're gonna provide feedback in a supportive environment and work together as teams. And our ultimate goal is to impact student learning.
So one of the things that we know about the model that we're looking at for instructional coaching is how really important it is to make sure that we have everyone working together. So in looking at the model, coaches, teachers, principal, we know those people that will be in the building every day, how important it is to really further those relationships and to build a strong foundation of the work that they do together. Last week, we had our administrators retreat, and we were able to launch some of that professional development. We had one of the days when the coaches in the district joined the building principals and central office staff, and we were focused on this work in particular, looking at relationships and the foundational pieces, and really talking about roles and responsibilities so that we can be working together as a team to support the learning in the classroom. So one of the things that we know from the partnership of the roles working together is that it's really important that we clarify the work and that we're able to communicate that to all staff. So what are the things that are the principal's responsibility versus that of the coach and the teacher? As Colleen mentioned, in our instructional coaching model, the work with, between coaches and teachers is collegial, it's nonevaluative. So it's really important that when we are clarifying roles, that we speak to the fact that evaluation is part of the role of the principal and that that's not the role of the coach, and really lay those foundations with expectations so that we can make sure we're all focused on the same goals, but that we really understand how the collaboration needs to work and what the individual expectations are. There's some new research out that we're following pretty closely, because it's pretty exciting, given where we are at this time. An impact study that's being followed really looks at levers for improvement and talks about the impact that a system can have on student achievement when you are linking three important levers. One being instructional leadership teams, professional learning communities, and adopting a research-based instructional coaching model. We have in our district, we have a central office leadership team. We also have school-based leadership teams. We've had those for several years. It came out actually as part of a requirement under No Child Left Behind in the continuous improvement planning process to have both a district leadership team as well as school-based leadership teams. So we have all of those in place. Several years ago, we started the professional learning communities model, where we have embedded release time every week for teachers, pre-K through 12, to work together. And with the addition, moving forward with a formal instructional coaching model, we have that third piece. So we're really excited to think about having all of those pieces and being able to collect some data and to follow our progress, knowing that we are in a position to follow those three levers that have been proven to show improvement. So just to follow that up, we realize that one of the real benefits for our instructional coaching model is the fact that we have that dedicated professional learning communities time, because it will provide opportunities, especially when we think about, talking about assessments, talking about the data that teachers are collecting, thinking about our curriculum maps, knowing the work that coaches want to do with teachers, time is obviously one of those things that we have to be thinking about, and how do we make that work? And there are a number of different ways that we're looking at time throughout the day, but one of those opportunities we have every week is through our professional learning communities time.
Can I say a little something about this slide, Stephanie?
Yes. Do we not have, we're not connected?
I don't have access.
You can't get on the Wi-Fi?
No, I am, but I don't think you shared the videos with me.
You should be able to.
No, you have to give permission.
So while they're figuring that out, I just wanted to say that as a pilot this year with new teachers, we have been, the coaches have been fortunate enough to go for training over the last two years with Jim Knight during the instructional coaching model. And as a pilot, we worked with new teachers and teachers that have been in the district for many years who wanted to work with us also, on using the video to reflect on their teaching. And that's what you're gonna see, their reflections in these videos.
One second.
Let Meg talk.
Yeah, go ahead, Meg.
Well, you just had.
No, go ahead, let Meg.
So I've had the experience of working in a community where we did not have a coaching model, and then we shifted towards having a coaching model prior to coming here. And so I'm just going to speak briefly to what I see as the benefits, specifically as a principal. So you can imagine, obviously, that as a principal, just like in any position, we have the capacity for only so much, given that there's only so many hours in the day. And far too frequently, the urgent outweighs the important. And while we know that our teachers are our greatest resource, that they have the highest impact, far too frequently are they left to be islands on their own because we don't have enough time to get into the classroom to partner with them, to collaborate with them. Coaches bring that to the table, right? Obviously, the collaboration between a coach and a principal is essential. And so a big part of that is making sure that we're normed on our expectations, normed on what excellent teaching and learning looks like in our building and across BSD. So that's some of the really exciting work that we'll be doing this year, is really all getting on the same page about what that looks like, no matter what school you go into. Last year, I had the pleasure of starting that work with Brent Trushon, who will be our coach this year at EMS. And so we would allocate time, or we would go on walks around the building and co-observe together so that we could norm on our expectations and definitions of what good teaching and learning is. I think that people can oftentimes think that coaching is something that only new teachers benefit from. But I have to say, just entering into the EMS community, I've been truly humbled by working with our veteran faculty and their hunger to continue to be innovative in their practice. And prior to this, in my old position, I had a similar experience, a story that kind of resonates with me that I go back to time and time again to reiterate the power of coaching. I was leaving for the day, and all of a sudden, a text came up from a faculty member who hadn't been at our school for two years. She was a veteran teacher, and she was just shooting me a text to thank me for the coaching work that I had done with her over the years, and specifically expressed the impact that it had on her practice and the impact it was still having on her practice. And that's a constant reminder to me. She was a faculty member who, at the time, didn't necessarily seem completely bought in. And yet, two years after the fact, she had transitioned into a new community. I just found it so powerful that in reflection, she was now seeing the impact that it had. I think also that it is not just powerful for the people being coached, but for those participating in the coaching. participating in the coaching. As someone who is not in the classroom anymore on a regular basis, it is constantly reminding me of the complex reality of, and the challenges and the beauty of what takes place in the classroom and helps me remember all to the actions that I need to take in other times of day when I'm interacting with students and also supporting our staff.
Great, can I make a suggestion that we watch the videos on our own time instead of taking up valuable board work time to watch them now? I mean, I'd gladly watch it at home, no, we have to watch it now?
No, I'll have Stephanie fill some questions.
Okay.
Stephanie, you wanna come and wrap up?
Okay.
Do we have any questions from the, because this was, I know this was sort of prompted by board members asking questions around the coaching model and instruction, but we'll go to Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, I was just thinking, this is another good area for the curriculum committee to dig into in terms of, and this came up at the diversity and equity committee, in terms of, you know, learning for the board's purposes, what are the expectations that you're talking about setting and how will they be measured, what data will be tracked, what are the outcomes that we're trying to evaluate and what's the timeframe, you know, where we might expect to see the data change? So it's really about like, I guess I would ask the curriculum committee to kinda frame the monitoring report with Stephanie or you all in terms of setting that framework up for measuring outcomes, what are we looking for, what do we expect to see happen? And then also in the, another question was, does this support proficiency-based learning? I guess that would be more for the middle school at this point. And then a third question is, does the EMS coach norm, that's a new verb in my vocabulary as of tonight, with the HMS coach?
That's a great question.
Yeah. So yes, thanks for the suggestion that we do some additional work with the curriculum committee and we can certainly share that information out. The Hunt and, so it's, a new part of this model is to have full-time coaching at Hunt and Edmunds Middle School. So we have already started the work of having those two coaches working together to sharing ideas, sharing resources. So we really see that that will help to strengthen the partnership that we have in helping teachers between the two middle schools to do more work together. One of the priorities for the middle school coaches will be around PLC time and we have an opportunity once a month for PLC time to be groups, content groups from the two middle schools. So we think that having the coaching roles at the middle schools will help to strengthen that work and really help us to even be, do more work with alignment between the two middle schools. And as far as the work around proficiencies, yes, the instructional coaching model definitely supports that work and we're very fortunate that the coach who will be starting at Hunt Middle School, Nadia Beck Conger, was previously a teacher here at BHS and takes with her a lot of knowledge around proficiencies. She had a very strong teacher leader role in the Nellie May work that we had with Partnership for Change. So we have a real opportunity in having Nadia working at Hunt Middle School to take much of the professional development and work that she benefited from by being here at BHS and really helping us to continue the work that we need to do at the middle schools.
Commissioner Barlow?
Yes, I would just add that if we're gonna review these on our own, we need to have the slide deck attached to the agenda, so if you could do that please.
Thank you, Commissioner Barlow. Commissioner Kerr?
Just a few notes, because I have looked into the coaching model and how we apply it here in BHS, a little bit based on the information I gathered at the district office the other day. And, you know, there are eleven coaches right now, I think I'm right on that, eleven coaches including the new, is it Brent?
Brent.
The new one, so there are eleven. And I'm just wondering, you know, if people are aware of the cost to the district, because these are basically professionals who are excellent teachers for the most part, who are not giving direct service to students. And if we ballpark figure the cost, it's a million dollars a year. And I have to mention the mentoring model as another excellent way to work with teachers professionally experienced as well as new teachers in the buildings. And I know that, you know, I have many, many questions, I'm gonna continue to pursue my interest in the coaching model and how it's applied in Burlington as we go out throughout the year, but I did wanna mention the cost, which is enormous. And, you know, I want you to think about how a full-time teacher at a school with a full-time multi-age second, third grade class accesses help from a coach. And you don't even have to answer that, you could just think about it, because I've talked to teachers and I know what the reality is in terms of getting people into the classroom. Is it modeling, is it taking a video and sitting down and looking at it a little bit later? There are all kinds of loopholes in the information that's presented about the coaching model and I hope I can fill some of those holes with some further questions.
I just wanna answer because I do think we're gonna work directly with students.
Sure.
And even working directly with teachers is gonna reflect on student and their instruction and their student growth. And I do hope to work with you throughout the year because I can answer a lot of those questions for you. And I was really one of the people that got to go to the Harvard team last year that went to Harvard and closing the achievement gap. And I can't tell you how many schools from around the country were there, but the biggest thing that closed the achievement gap was co-teaching, instructional coaching and lead teaching. And all of those in Louisiana, if you look online and look at the research in Louisiana, they've closed their achievement gap by using those models.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And also the money of new teachers, if we keep losing new teachers and don't support them and don't mentor them, is a lot of money also.
Next, Commissioner Wick.
So, coaching does sound like a good model, it sounds like we've been using it a bit for a couple of years, but now we're really officially rolling it out perhaps on a uniform basis. The way it came up in the last budget was sort of at the expense of certain math and literacy elementary school interventionists. I wonder, and this, you don't have to answer, because obviously we wanna move on a bit, but are coaches, is the coaching model and math and literacy interventionists mutually exclusive or for future budgeting purposes, do interventionists still play an important role, K through five, in terms of their specialization in math and literacy and their ability to assist directly the students? And I just refer briefly to our retreat where this national consultant named Nathan Levinson actually recommended interventionists in the sense that they'd be highly qualified and experienced teachers who come in and work directly with those kids in need and not necessarily pull them out. He didn't have a great solution because we all agree that we don't wanna pull them out, but I think he said find time outside the school day, who knows what he said. But bottom line is, the gist was, it's important to maintain supplemental direct instruction with what I'll call interventionists. And so I just wonder in the future, when we're budgeting, is it mutually exclusive? And so I'll let Yao maybe think about that and get back to the board at a later date.
Thank you for that, well, we'll certainly contemplate that. One of the reasons why we had Nate Levinson present, he's written several books on this and done some research in Vermont specifically around this, and if you look at the literature that he's written, he actually advocates for first best instruction first and then intervention. But the first thing you have to do is build the capacity of your teachers. So that reduces the amount of students who need interventions and then you can apply strategic actions to it. So that's what he actually advocates, if you look at his literature and he'll go and so, but I hear what you're saying, we've been talking about this for a while, so I know Stephanie's been sort of listening to this and we're already committed to have a more sort of rigid process in trying to monitor the success of the programming and we'll be able to monitor that and see if it's working, we're gonna use it, if it's not, then we'll have to change to something else.
Commissioner Curry.
He also talked about how Vermont is unique in the way it uses paraeducators and puts money there instead of hiring more specialized professional folks to be in the classroom. And I can also say that when we had an interim superintendent, Howard Smith, he tried to restructure the special ed services in order to move towards this model. And that's when we lost a lot of paraeducators and then he created child psychologist positions, but the entire model was never fully implemented because of various issues, but that was his direction also, was to go with the Nathan Levinson approach.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry for that perspective, yes.
So I just wanted to say that I appreciate the feedback and I think what we're trying to do here is to take a lot of research that we have spent time looking at, looking at our student data and we believe that yes, we still need interventionists to work with students, but we also need to have really skilled professionals that can work with our teachers, that can work with new teachers as well as veteran teachers when it may be time to implement a new part of the curriculum and they need support. So we feel like we are trying a model that will balance that out, that will have, continue to have student support but also have the teacher support that we need. And we currently have nine coaches in the district, just for clarification, and so we're really committed to following this model really closely and looking at the research and being able to collect some data.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you for saying that last item because I wanna beat that drum again, and I did this a couple of months ago when we talked about it, is there's questions about the model, so show it with the data, right, so build that into however you're structuring it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more comment about the number?
Let's talk about it after a few moments, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the.
Capital Plan.
Capital Plan, thank you.
All right, back by popular demand.
Without the crutch itself.
Director Spalding.
Thank you.
Good evening.
We're talking about the capital plan project updates and Marty's gonna give you a quick overview. One of the things, I'll perfect this by saying that there will be information for people who are interested in going into detail around some of these things, go on through the site in Marty's area and you can get more details around some of these specific areas, but this hopefully gives you a flavor and teases you to want to go on and learn more.
So the first slide that we'll go to is just a slide that you've all seen before, this is our capital plan budget that reflects the thirty-nine million dollars worth of authorized spending that we have to address at each of our various schools. Next slide just represents some of the projects that we have going on this summer. So we are replacing some lockers at Hunt Middle School, those lockers are planned to go in next week. We're replacing playground equipment at SA, that upgrade actually won't go into effect until mid-September, so we're gonna have to work around kids going to school while we're replacing that new playground equipment. We've got a elevator replacement happening at BHS right now in A Building actually, and we're optimistic that that will be completed before kids return. We've got various paving projects around the district. And our biggest project that we're focused on is Edmunds Sea Building renovations. So that project is planned to take place over the next twelve to fourteen months, so we are under full construction on that site right now. It's, everything seems to be on schedule, within budget, and I've got a couple of pictures that just shows the work that's taking place there. So the next slide, this is your new basement cafeteria, so it's got a ways to go until we complete the renovations in that space. This is all the site work that's taking place. Clearly, this, you know, this site will be under construction through the next school year, this is what it'll look like when students return. So definitely we'll have to, you know, work around the challenges of construction taking place while students are attending that school. And then here's just a quick overview of what the new maker space is transforming into. It's also not completed yet, but many of the interior finishes have been completed, but we still have to install the new casework and whatnot and that it's definitely planned to be completed before school starts. So another upcoming project through the school year that I also wanted to inform the board of this good news is, we recently wrote, well, nine grants for, the Department of Public Safety came out with a safety grant allowing schools to ask for grant funding, I believe it's upwards, it was roughly twenty-three thousand dollars per school. We wrote a grant for each of our schools in our district, we were awarded those funds for nine different properties, so it's upwards of over two-hundred thousand dollars. Our focus is going to be on access control, so the, like, the card readers are what provide access to front doors and whatnot without using, rather than using key access. And also updating our Entercom systems to work with our voice-over IP phone systems to allow proper use for lockdown procedures. Right now, many of our schools, you can only do an all-call throughout the school from the main office and this would be adapting those systems so that you can do a lockdown in any location throughout the school. So great that we have some of those funds available to move forward with making those upgrades this current school year. So our next priorities still include looking at the second phase of projects at Edmunds as well as looking at the upgrades to Integrated Arts Academy around the building envelope and HVAC system. We're also still looking at options for the early ed preschool center, we're looking at options for temporary classrooms to display students to do some of these projects and also still looking at the options for Champlain student drop-off. So our next steps, oh, sorry, this just represents, you know, all of the individuals that are involved in that design work, everybody from the principals and directors as well as staff and community and our architects and engineers as well as the process that we go through with for permitting, et cetera. And our next steps are to work with the newly-created board finance and facilities representatives to refine some options for our next capital plan that will be bringing an update to the board in October.
All right, open for questions, comments?
Commissioner Barlow?
Yes, thank you for that. Will the accessibility, the accessible main entrance for Edmunds be part of Phase One of that or is that on hold still?
It is not part of Phase One, it's not part of the current scope of work, that is what would be proposed in Phase Two.
And also the BHS BTC access controls, would that work be, I guess, thrown away if we were to rehab the building or?
No, we're doing that work now. Yep. Basically, so right now, we don't currently lock the entrance door to this building throughout the day because we don't have any access control whatsoever, so we're installing that updated access control system, you know, right now through the summer that will take effect once school starts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
If you don't mind, I'll just expand a little bit of detail on that. So throughout the district, we have a bunch of different systems. What we did identify as a district is we want to move towards using the same system that the city just adopted, so, which is also the same system that is used at UVM. So it's called a Seaborg system. So the city just recently, through the, over the last year, installed that access control system in all of its buildings across the city and it's, well, the mainframe is actually housed at UVM, but it's monitored at our police barracks. So by using this same system, we can also provide our police, you know, you have to assign them rights, but to be able to have the ability to have that access directly from the dispatch.
Great update, Marty. Any other questions? Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
So because the last time we met, so we haven't really focused on the preschool guidelines for a while, so I kinda lost.
so I kind of lost my place in where we are. We had a resolution, and then Commissioner Wick sent out some instructions that were a little not aligned with our resolution. So I think the board never had a chance to
I'd like to object, I don't believe I sent out any instructions that were not aligned, I think that's a misrepresentation.
So point of order, I can, we can, we, the superintendent, myself, and Director of Facilities Marty have spoken extensively over the two months about a timeline, and I defer to them to come back to the board with their proposal. And adjusting that, that timeline, we've met fully as a, as a group to discuss that. So we do owe it to the board, that information, and I've looked to the superintendent for that guidelines.
Okay, and I would just say if people watch the video and then read our resolution and then look at Jeff's, Commissioner Wick's email, I do not see alignment there, so that's my concern. So I'll do that, I'll share that with you, Chairwell, and the superintendent regarding where I see misalignment, so that anything that comes back to the board accounts for that.
Thank you.
Open-ended question.
Just for clarification in terms of what Marty just presented, so the next steps for us is Marty's going to meet with the finance facility group and start looking at the options to bring back a recommendation, some options to the board. And so that group at that point will have an opportunity to clarify, to make sure that the, the message is, is correct and we've got clear direction, and then we'll bring that back. And so the first update is October, so at that point, the board should hear the first update after the conversations with the, with the representatives as well.
And is there a date for that meeting yet?
Uh, no, but we will, Mr. Fisher? Thank you.
Yep, come up next.
Alright, thank you. Oh, Marty's still here. And here's Marty.
I just want to introduce, this is John Hamelgarn, he's our architect and partner of, from Black River Design.
So this is the VHS update. So we do have quite a bit of information for you, and after presentation, there'll be additional information that's also posted for individuals, once again, who want to get into detail around some of the areas, and particularly around some of the cost pieces that we're going to share later on tonight. So turn it over to Marty.
Okay, well, I think the next slide is yours, actually.
Oh, wait, go ahead, start. Okay, one of the things I wanted to, I wanted to share is, and I've mentioned this to the board a couple of times in terms of deferred maintenance and capital challenges, it's a national trend, right? So all the sort of associations that I belong to nationally and all their interests, everyone's sort of talking this issue around their facilities. And I had the, the fortune to, and I'm going to share that in the good news later on, but to be in Baltimore with some of our students for an event, and we were at a school, and that school, talk about deferred maintenance, had some serious deferred maintenance to the extent that they were now having their debate over building a new facility, and they're getting support around that. I wanted you to take a look at the graphic on the left, so I shot that through a gated screen, this is the hallway. So their deferred maintenance became so severe and neglected that they had to close off all these halls and couldn't have classrooms in these areas because of the potential danger to students and staff. And we know that, that this is a trend that's happening when, when boards are dealing with budgets. We go through making choices whether if you want to add people or staff, or paint the walls, or fill that crack, and it's always easier to not do that crack, but eventually it catches up. And so these are some good examples, the one in the site is from Marty, from, from another school district in terms of what happens, and we're trying to maintain our facilities at, at the highest standard for our students. And part of this VHS project is not only to address the accessibility, the programmatic pieces, but also to have fine facilities for our, for our future generations' students to come forward. So I wanted to kind of share that with you, that, you know, we're not sort of unique in terms of this challenge. I know our colleagues around, even in Chilton County are talking about some of their facilities as well, too, and to know that this is a challenge that's not, it's not just exclusive to Burlington.
Alright, so a brief overview of the project, and John's actually going to go through the design details of what we're proposing, but, so a quick overview. We're proposing to do a new addition of a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet that would wrap around this existing A Building and tie into the existing B Building. And then we would also be renovating a hundred and sixty-five thousand sque, uh, square feet of existing building footprint in A, B, and F, totaling roughly two-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet of high school space. We would then, once the project is completed, we would phase that, that new construction around still utilizing C, C, D, and E buildings. Once, once all of that, the, the new projects were completed, we, we would then demolish buildings C and D, and possibly E as well, however, just given the, the location of that, that building on this site, there is, you know, we are looking at whether or not there are other options to use that for, for separate programming that wouldn't be attached to VHS, but, but the, the, the dollars that we're presenting here are not included of doing those renovations to that, that particular building. We're just looking at that as, as future options down the road. So some project highlights, basically the scope of work that are, that is included in, in the project. Major upgrades to, enhancements to accessibility. Also, we are looking to consolidate our instruction space around one core building, this A Building, to reduce our, our travel, travel pass. What we would be looking at installing all new lint windows, new roofs, exterior siding to improve energy efficiency, and also new HVAC upgrades, new lighting upgrades, stormwater management, and also upgrades to, to the security and, and additional access control. And another design factor that we're, that we're incorporating into this, or would like to incorporate into this project is, is a, a CHIPS certification. So CHIPS, it, which stands for Collaborative High Performance Schools, is a certification very similar to LEED. If you're familiar with what a LEED certification is for designing buildings, it's meeting a certain efficiency level for the design of that building, where CHIPS is much more specific, it is, it's very specific to schools. And similar to LEED, there's a, there's a point structure for that certification. To do a renovation product, project, you have to have a minimum of eighty-five points with a maximum of two-hundred-and-fifty points. But the, the design components of CHIPS, different from LEED, are really focused around schools, so there's a lot more emphasis on areas such as natural lighting, such as acoustics, as well as making sure that you have appropriate spaces to display student artwork, also around vandalism and, and security. So we're, we're proposing to design this building around the CHIPS model. And what I just also want to encourage you to take a look at is this, this, this presentation will obviously be available on board docs, and I'm sure we'll also have it on our website. We currently, I, I have it linked to the CHIPS website, so if you click on that, you can learn a lot, a lot more detail about what the CHIPS program looks like. So this is a long process coming to conclusion. So we hired Black River Design back in two thousand thirteen. In two thousand fourteen, we went through a thorough process of involving the staff, students, and administrators to, to come up with design directives for renovating this particular building. In two thousand fifteen, we worked with a company called EMG to evaluate all of our building's capital needs. Through that process, they identified that this building had thirty million dollars worth of, of needs that needed to be addressed within the next ten years. Actually, most of those needs were immediate needs that needed to be addressed right, right away. Also, we have linked the full assessment here to this presentation, so if you want to review those on your own, and as well as the, the ten-year list of capital needs spreadsheet. Two thousand sixteen, two projects rose to the top, where we then formed the re-envisioned group to go out and gauge the community to support one of those two options, either build new or do a par, partial demolition with a renovation around, around A Building. The re-envision committee made a recommendation to the superintendent in two thousand seventeen. We've also since gone through a more elaborate process identifying what our design directives are. This process is called an owner's project requirement. So we have put together workshops, sessions with stakeholders, staff, as well as members from the community, we had members from the re-envisioned group. And through that process, we identified what our owner project requirements are, very similar to our design directives. And then, once we established those design directives or project requirements, we, we built it into a report, which is actually a working document that will help guide not only the design, but also the construction, right down to the commissioning of this project, so that we act, when we actually complete this process, this document will be used through that commissioning process to make sure that what we intended to build is, is what was, what will be built. So again, great link to review that document on your own, very thorough information there. In two thousand, in April of two thousand eighteen, the You can go to the next slide, Chris. The re-envision group made a recommendation to the superintendent to do a partial renovation rather than a, a new building. The anticipated cost for that project was between sixty and seventy million dollars. The board, the superintendent then made that recommendation to the board, and this resolution was adopted in, in April to move forward with, with a proposed bond for November. So we're here this evening to give you three options for that bond, and we'll discuss the, the details between those three options. So last couple of months, we've been going through extensive amount of work getting the message out. We, we've recently scheduled some tours, asking members of the communities to participate. We've had two of those tours, and there's one this coming Saturday. I think we had very good participation, both those tours, we had, you know, thirty people attend each of them. And from, from those tours, we also had the media participate, and we had a, a number of, of different news clips around messaging the, the needs for, for this particular building, as well as, we also had members of the re-envisioning group, and I believe also members of the board participating in some, some community engagement session. I, I think this last weekend, there was a tabling at City Market, and we had some volunteers handing out information about the project there. And we've got some future community engagement scheduled as well. So next, we're going to just discuss some of the, the challenges with the way that this building is currently laid out. Clearly, given the, how spread out this building is, and that, based on the number of different buildings we have spread out across the campus, it is really difficult to travel from class to class. This is E Building, and this is A Building, so the top of E Building is actually seven stories higher than the bottom of A Building. E Building makes up science and math. Bottom of A, we have things like band and chorus, so if you had to travel from, you know, science to chorus, you would have to navigate seven stories, and it, it would be, it's even more challenging for anybody with any mobility issues to, to make that travel path. That was clearly the focus that we, that we represented on, on the tours that we were giving, that, that it is very, very challenging to navigate this widespread campus. And other issues that we have with this building are around the building envelope and windows, and the number of, of access points we have spread throughout to create a non-secure, secure facility, as well as other issues such as outdated technology and just our current classrooms are, are not designed to meet today's educational delivery. I, I like how Yao actually refers to, to it, that this, this building was designed in the nineteen-sixties, and, and obviously, instruction has changed considerably on how we deliver that instruction in the classroom. However, our facilities have not changed whatsoever. So some needs identified from the staff in the, in the community. So these were needs that were identified through the, the process that we went through in, in two thousand thirteen, as well as also the very similar needs that were identified through our owner project requirement process that we went through. So there is need for additional P and athletic facilities, need for additional stage support spaces. We'd like to have, provide more student gathering spaces, have classrooms that are designed to encourage collaboration, occupant temperature control in the classrooms, as well as have a high-performance design. We'd like to reduce travel paths, have safe, secure entry points, large cafeteria, and create a new image, a new facade for, for Burlington High School.
Ooh.
So here's a look of what the new building would look like, and I'm going to let John jump into some of the details here.
Thank you Marty. So this is something we've been working on. As you saw in that previous slide, there were a couple of things that were, that really came to the forefront as we've been having these conversations, such as really consolidating the building and creating this new image. And I think by wrapping the new spaces around the existing core, which is actually in pretty good shape and is, is some expensive spaces, like the auditorium and the gymnasium that are, that are there, you actually can accomplish two or three of these things all at once. You've got this new image now where we can actually put learning spaces that are facing North Avenue, facing the, the portion of the site that is, is where the public interacts with the building. We can put some light in there, you can start to see some of the activities that are happening in the building. You also consolidate the building so that you've really reduced those travel paths significantly. We're still, as you can see, that's still a four-story building, probably still the tallest high school in the state. But it also gives us a chance to put a new building envelope around the existing exterior walls of this building, which is also going to improve your energy efficiency. So we felt that this option really kind of accomplished two or three of those main goals, all in one, one swoop. So as you can see here, we, we're still looking at probably a masonry-type facade because that's durable. It lasts. One of the good news is, a good, piece of the good news on this site is you've got a lot of ledge. It's also one of the bad news pieces on this site, but at least the building doesn't go anywhere. You, you're actually hard pressed to find too many cracks and masonry around here. So I think that's probably, you know, you can also get a hint here that one of the other things we're trying to address with this proposal is maybe get that sea of parking out of your view shed as you look at the building from the public way. So let's put some green space in front of the building, let's give you an unobstructed view of the building. So having said that, I think, can we go to the, the site plan? Is that the next?
Yep.
I think that's the next one, oh boy, that's little. So again, one of the main goals here is to try to separate out vehicular traffic, bus traffic, parking, and whatnot. So, you know, right here is the existing bus loop, and we're keeping that because right now the buses come off of North Avenue, they go around, they drop off, and they go back onto the street. And we felt like that was onto the street and we felt like that was really getting very difficult to do it better than that. What we have done here is created a second loop for parent drop-off or other short-term visitors who are going to be dropping someone off or picking them up and then leaving the site again. At the same time, the other congestion point on this site is at the mid, middle of the day, when there's an awful lot of buses here from sending schools for the tech center. And this gives you a secondary loop. Right now, that second loop is down here and it really doesn't work that well because it's too small. So this allows for that half hour, forty-five minutes in the middle of the day for a lot of buses to be here. One of the other goals we've had was to create a single entrance, which I think you saw on the previous slide, it was of a sufficient scale to really be noticeable from the road. And we want everyone using that, including the tech center students. And you'll see on the interior floor plan how we, we're gonna try to accomplish that. The parking, we've moved up where the buildings are being demolished.
Just, just one comment just on that particular piece. If you look at modern school design, considering some of the safety concerns we've had the last, you know, two decades, that is a singular feature that is, is very much needed here. We have the seven, seven buildings and multiple entries, so if you're trying to keep a building secure, we can't manage all the store, all the doors for sure, but having a singular entrance helps us to maintain safety in terms of, for our students and our staff.
So we, we kept the parking down here for the students. There's a larger staff parking lot up above. There is some parking down here, we'll get into that in a little bit, that's kind of for specific use, as well as some visitor parking here so that the visitors are then encouraged to come in the building the exact same way. The other huge component on the site planning of the site is something you probably hear a lot about these days, which is called stormwater management and treatment. You've got a lot of impervious area on this site and we're gonna have to address that. Water likes to run downhill, so we've included some of those areas here towards the bottom of the site and even across the road here and a little piece next to the track. Those, again, this is, it's actually helpful in that it, it creates an open space that we wanted to be able to see across and not have to be a bunch of, of cars. So, we're trying to make these things, these elements actually address more than one issue at a time. I think, I think that's pretty much the end from a site planning standpoint for now. This building, as you can see, it's, it's got a lot of three-dimensionality to it and it's extremely difficult to describe in a series of two-dimensional plans, but I'm gonna try. I'm gonna start, not necessarily how I would lead you on a tour of the building, but from the bottom up here, just to give you a sense that we can kind of stack one floor on top of the deck and you can understand what's, what's where and why. This is the lowest level. Right now, you know, the band and chorus rooms are in this area and these are some of the music support spaces underneath the stage. The existing exterior wall kind of runs this way, across here. The existing elevator is over in this area that Marty was talking about being replaced this summer.
Yep.
The, what we've got down here then is a couple of the tech center programs, so this light blue is tech center space, this is the existing auto body and this is the aviation program which is being relocated. Those need to be down on the ground because you need to drive large vehicles in and out of there on a frequent basis. The next piece is this purple area here, which is the on-top program. So on-top is down below here. But it needs a separate entrance, it wants to be a little bit separated from the high school but still be connected to it. This was a good spot and you remember the parking I had down here will actually serve there, as well as this community athletic facility right here, which will be down on the ground level, close to that student parking lot, which won't have a lot of student cars in it after school and the public will be wanting to use this. There's this weight room slash fitness center over here, some changing rooms and secondary locker rooms up here and a training room, which will be easily accessible from the ballfields across the street, which is something that didn't happen when that fieldhouse was put in. So that's, that's the bottom level, that's why what we've got down there is down there. This next level is the area, is the floor that currently has all the locker rooms and whatnot underneath the gym here. We've got, we've moved property services into this building, consolidating it out of their current location, which is near the loading dock back here and where the aviation program is now, which is a separate level in the building, is not accessible to any students because of the funny floor level. So we kind of put property services in there, which actually makes a lot of sense. These are the upper levels of the tech center programs. We've started to wrap around the building here with this corridor, with these classrooms and here. And then lastly, on this level, I think the key piece is that we've put the chorus and band right here next to the stage, they're at the exact same floor level as the stage and this cross aisle in the auditorium. So that's all at the same level and it's gonna be extremely easy access from those performing arts spaces right into the theater. We've also included a little exit out this way for safety, just so, we're thinking there's a large assembly space there, we still need to be able to get out. The other interesting thing here is that up those stairs you come out of the auditorium is the, is the current lobby, which is about a half level up from that, that cross aisle in the theater. But that means that's only a half level down, a set of stairs, to this floor level. So, what you see right up here, and I apologize for my shaky hand here, but maybe left-handed works better. This stair and elevator right here will get you from the front door right down to the auditorium. Right now, people are having to go outside and go in the auditorium through this door right here, but it's an exterior door. Now it's gonna be just a half level off from that existing door, or from the lobby upstairs. So I think that's a huge improvement. There's also some restrooms that have been added in here for theater use. I think, let's move up to the next floor. So now we're up to what I would, where I would start the tour of this building, because the main entrance that we talked about being consolidated or, or created out front is right here. And it comes in down a half level to this theater lobby, down a half level to those classrooms below. You walk through, we're getting rid of the existing administrative space over here to create an open space, which I'm gonna show you a little video of here in a little bit, that gives you an open space all the way from the front door, past the theater, past the way down to the gym, down to where the cafeteria is. And this courtyard that you see right here is what you see, is what you see out the, if this blue box wasn't in the way, where you'd see out the windows right out here. And that will remain as a nice courtyard that'll be very accessible to this open student gathering space here, to the cafeteria and to the connection up to B building. The other thing that this does is we're moving the BTC administration from, well, I, I doubt anybody in this room maybe even knows where that is. It is hidden way up on the third floor of F building. We're gonna move it down here so that it is accessible to all students as they walk through and on this student gathering space, we've also then included a connector so that you can go from inside the building, right here, up a ramp that's gonna start right over there, go up and around and up some more, there'll be a little open cafeteria expansion as a platform, right through where that little mural is in those windows. And then a further ramp up, right over to get you into F building. So now someone, everyone, whether you are in a wheelchair or not, regardless of your age, can come in the front doors, walk at a single level down here, up a little ramp, up another little ramp, up some more ramp here and get to the tech center. You don't have to go outside and you don't have to go on this incredibly convoluted path from A to B to D to F. And then all the way back down to this end of F building to get the elevator to go up or down in that building. So, this is going to greatly help that, that travel path issue that we've heard so much about. It also allows us to put some additional space for the cafeteria, which we heard was one of the main pieces that, that was on the wish list from the very beginning. Same with the expansion of the cafeteria right there, which is gonna allow you to modernize how you serve food in this place and bring you up into kind of the current thinking on, on food service. I think that's, that's about hit on that one. So, the, the, the thing that you couldn't see on that plan is that we're gonna be raising the roof on this whole area between here and that front door. And that allows us to bring some second-level connectors across here, over here and in here, which means that where you see the roof that goes across right here is now gonna be open in a walkway that goes over to the first floor of B building, right there. So no longer these, this tunnel stair that you can see right here, which is the only connection to B building, but you'll be able to go from, from where on-top is right now over here, which is now going to be with those big rooms and a single loaded corridor, a bunch of art studios up on the top floor with lots of daylight available to it, as well as the international foods room, which is going to be conveniently located, just one short flight of stairs above the culinary arts program and the kitchen and the cafeteria. So we get all that food stuff kind of in one area. But you can walk from that level straight across to the lower level of B building, which is where we're gonna be locating the ninth grade academies. Those I think are well-placed in B building because it allows them to have a little bit of area in the building, in the entire facility where it will be, I don't wanna, segregation is such a horrible word, but it allows them their own identity in that part of the building as they transition from middle school into a full-fledged high school experience. So, both levels of, of B building would be the ninth grade academies. The last piece here would be, as you can see here, this is student, student support services, this is intensive special needs and the red is the health and the nurse. So we put all those things above what you probably, I didn't mention, but down below is the, is the main administrative space and guidance, right near the main entrance. So those are all right there, two floors at the core center of the building.
Library.
Thank you. The last major piece here that I haven't mentioned yet is the, is the library. So that's gonna get moved from kind of what's, which would ultimately be the, the far end of the building up in B building, we're gonna move it back down here with, with much more of a face on the, the core spine that we're talking or the atrium, however we wanna describe that.
Carson.
And then I think this is really the last, the last slide in this series, which is the, the top level of B building, which is now a whole floor above anything else I've shown you, just gives you a sense of how this building really steps right up the hill by getting rid of C, D and E, just eliminating those, those top three or four levels on most of the building. So, I think that's, that's a walkthrough of this building. These would just be two more of the ninth grade academies, which involve just the larger rooms are science rooms and then there's a pair of humanities classrooms that can be opened up into a double-sized classroom and then the math room, there's some foreign language rooms there as well. You can also see throughout the building, these, these little green spaces here are conference rooms or breakout spaces, which this building is definitely lacking in terms of, of a really important component of what is known as twenty-first century learning.
So we got this great little video that'll allow you to, to walk you through the school or at least the new front entrance of the building. That will also be available on our website. Carson picked the music, by the way. So, the next slide represents what's this gonna cost the taxpayers. So, we've, we've got three scenarios here. This, these three scenarios with a, this, this level of, of budget detail, what I wanted to add is there's also a link if you're, you're looking for a little further detail on the budget, but those three cost options are sixty million dollars, sixty-five million dollars or sixty-eight point five million dollars. And the next slide, we're, we're gonna talk a little bit about what, what those differences So, again, if you're looking for greater detail, feel free to click on, on, on this full detail option here, but we wanna just give you examples of what are included in those options. And so, every one of these options are going to have the same level of, of renovations to the, to the core, the core A building, to include the same, all new windows, new roofs, new HVAC system, new lighting, all, all of those same options that we've been focusing on through this presentation and through the design parameters that, that we've, we've been presenting. One of the major differences between the different cost options is the, is this line here. So, the first option, to do this project for sixty million dollars, what we're saying we're gonna have to do is not invest as much into the existing F building tech center. So, the tech center has had, you know, upgrades to, to the F building greater than what we've had throughout the rest of the building and they also have a different funding mechanism to help them make, make, you know, additional upgrades down the road. What this, this proposal provides is us investing basically twenty-five dollars a square foot into that building, which would include upgrades to the windows, to the bathrooms and to security. But you'd see very little upgrades throughout the rest of the building. In scenario B, we're, we're proposing to make that, that same investment into the tech center and scenario C, the sixty-eight million dollar option would be to do the same level of upgrades throughout the tech center as we're proposing to do in, throughout the rest of the building. So, there would be much greater construction throughout, such as replacing, you know, the flooring, the interior finishes, as well as the HVAC system, where the first two proposals, we are not including those in that option for F building. So, the other options between the three scenarios is, is around the chips that I had mentioned. In the sixty million dollar option, we don't feel that we can do even any certification for, for, to meet the chip certification. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't be doing energy efficient options to the project, we just probably will not do, need to be able to go to the level of, to receive that certification because there are additional costs associated to, to that, to get that certification. The second option, we believe we could meet that certification, but would probably be, as I mentioned, chips is kind of based on, on points, so we would achieve that level of certi- certification at a lower points, point structure. And the third scenario, we would be meeting the chips at a higher level and a higher level points option for chips, which the, the benefit of designing the tech center as we're proposing to do in, throughout the rest of the building. So there would be much greater, uh, construction throughout, such as replacing, you know, the flooring, the, uh, interior finishes, as well as the HVAC system, where the first two proposals, we are not including those in that option for F Building. So the other options between the three scenarios is, is around the chips that I had mentioned. In the $60 million option, we don't feel that we can do even any certification for, to meet the chip certification. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't be doing, uh, energy efficient, um, options to the project. We just probably will not do, need to be able to go to the level of, to receive that certification, because there are additional costs associated to, to that, to get that certification. The second option, we believe we could meet that certification, but would probably be, as I mentioned, chips is kind of based on, on points. So we would achieve that level of certi- certification at a lower points, uh, point structure. And the third scenario, we would be meeting the chips at a higher level and, a higher level points, uh, option for chips, which the, the benefit of designing to that higher level is to have a higher performing building, which, which will reduce your, your, your future operating cost, your, your future, uh, energy cost. The difference in building materials between the three, I'm, I'm just going to give some basic examples. So like our typical designed, uh, new construction bathroom that we're, that we're, that we typically design around, uh, in the rest of our, our schools, we install, um, epoxy flooring and tile halfway up the walls. This, this first option would be least grade building materials, so it would be a cheaper version flooring, and it would be painted sheet rock. So it wouldn't be able to be maintained as, uh, effectively as, as, uh, those better material, building material options. So this second scenario would include, uh, better building materials in our bathrooms and whatnot, as, as well as on our flooring throughout the, throughout the building, as well as on our exterior siding, as well as, uh, tho- those interior finishes throughout the classroom. So, uh, again, we have a little bit greater detail if you go to this link here, but what we're proposing to meet these different cost options is to go with least expensive building materials and/or more of a, what we're, what we're saying is a, a greater standard level of building materials. Other examples such as air conditioning, which is a huge driver in cost in designing any building. Scenario number one would, would include no air conditioning throughout the building. Scenario number two would be limited air conditioning in areas such as offices and, and common areas. And scenario number three would be, uh, offices in common areas with, with at least a minimum dehumidication, dehumidification throughout the classroom areas. And again, just furniture, this is, would be the fit-up budget. Our first option limits us to the amount of furniture that we would be able to afford to, to put in this building once, you know, once all of the work was completed, based on the other options that were, that, um, were presenting there. So we also looked at what, what does, what does something less than $60 million look, look like? And what does something more than $70 million look like? So our $30 million option is to address our capital needs. What that really means is that addresses our maintenance needs. No upgrades to the layout of the facility. We would still have the same unreasonable travel paths that we currently have. We'd still have the same outdated learning spaces, and we'd still have the same inefficient insulation in, in the envelope. We'd likely still have the same number of unsecure entry, entry points throughout the campus. What would a $50 million option look like? So if we were to renovate this existing 245,000 square foot building at the same level of, of, um, cost per, per construction that we're proposing to do in the renovations of our, of our new building, that would look like, that would cost $50 million. And, and again, it wouldn't address, uh, the, the accessibility challenges, and we would have to, uh, add a whole lot of additional elevators throughout the campus, um, so that we could have elevators in each of the separate buildings. And we also couldn't do that construction, um, without displacing students. $80 million option, what we would be looking at is, uh, similar to the, to the, the three options that we've presented with you, to you. For roughly $78 million, we would be adding, um, you know, greater value, um, building materials. We would, uh, we would be meeting the highest level of chips. We would be adding things such as green roofs, air conditioning throughout the building. We have definitely looked at, you know, what it, what would it look like to, to, to build this building to the highest standard possible, and that would cost $80 million. And, um, our option for a new building is $100 million. So I think we're going to turn it over to Nate.
Why don't we stop for questions around?
Yeah.
We're going to move into the finance section, but I thought before we go, if there's any questions around the hardcore facilities pieces, then Marty could respond to that.
Or John.
Or John, yeah. Before we move into the, uh, the section.
And also for commissioners to know, we will have a meeting on Tuesday, the August 21st, that we have yet to announce to everybody to follow up as well, in much more detail. But yes, Commissioner Curry.
So that was my question. If we do have really detailed questions about the site plan and all these technical pieces?
Yes.
We should wait till the 21st.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So how much, uh, community and staff input went into this level of design?
A, a great deal of community and staff level of input went into this design. A bulk of it went in, in 2013. We also, uh, went through extensive, uh, of input through the OPR process that we just did recently. And then also, this isn't the only level of staff input that we, that would go into this design process. This is still, we're still at conceptual stages where, you know, the, the refinement to exactly what, what the needs are in each and every classroom would involve John and his team working with all of the staff to identify tho- those design components. That would be, would, would be after the bond, during the design process.
Commissioner Curry.
Um, so I know that there's a lot of city councilors here, and I know that we have a goal of presenting to them on the 27th. Is there an opportunity for them to share their questions, or is there a process for that?
Yes, at now, or we're going to have Nate's presentation? Or are you saying before?
I'm just asking.
Yes.
Is there a process for the city councilors to get, to get their questions to us before we meet with them on the 27th, so that, you know, there's some ability to, you know, get all that information prepared?
Thank you for your question. Yes, Superintendent O'Bang and I spoke about that, and we also, I had met with one city councillor and spoken to the mayor's office, um, about that process and developing it. So it's, it's a conversation that we're going to have this week to be able to identify that. Once the board, this is the first time the board has been able to listen to the presentation, and so the next natural step was that. Thank you for your question.
Is that it?
Commissioner Brown.
Um, yes, at the lower level of chip certification, are the buildings more expensive to run? And do we have data, or could we get data on that?
We are in the process of doing some energy modeling. That would help identify, uh, those overall savings. And I think part of that energy, energy modeling could be modeling against whatever point structure that, if we chose to design here versus choosing to, to design, you know, this level of, of efficiency.
I'm not sure that there's a lot of empirical data out there that says exactly how much you can expect. Every building is its own model, and so unless you're going to rebuild one of the other schools, it's a, the chips process, that's about the only way you could actually have a really hard number as to what you're going to do. But obviously, doing the level that chips requires is going to make the building more efficient or easier to maintain, or a better learning environment. And it's, I was actually impressed by chips in terms of how much they actually focus on that, on trying to create really good learning environments to improve the education experience for people in the building.
One thing I also just want to point out with chips is, you know, other states like Massachusetts and New Hampshire for a while had a structure where if you, the, the greater points you could achieve, the ba- greater rebates they would offer. We do not have that, that, those rebates available to us here. So there's, I mean, the, the goal to, to achieve the, the greater points would be to have a more efficient building, but there really is no, no kickbacks to, to achieve those greater points, like there are in, available in some other states.
Commissioner Curry.
Is there any discussion with BED about rooftop solar so that we can, um, support the city's goal to, and renew the grid?
Not direct commu-, you know, we haven't had those, um, direct, um, conversations about, you know, what we might do on, on this particular building, other than just big conceptual pictures of what we might do. Solar, obviously, is a little bit more challenged with, with schools because we need the third-party, um, provider to, to, um, support the system because they're the ones getting the, the, uh, tax credit.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've done power purchase agreements before, but the reason I ask is because it would allow us to add cold climate heat pumps in some of the rooms for free. And this, it is a city goal to integrate grid, and
Yep.
So I'm just wondering if we could please initiate those conversations
Yep.
To get their feedback on what that would entail, what it would look like, and, you know, negotiating a power purchase agreement is something we've been involved in before, so I believe there's some groundwork.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good. Move on to the next section.
Yes.
So, uh, while Director Avery will sort of talk about a bit of the financial piece with this project.
Are we in control here?
No, she is, but I don't know.
Carson's in control.
Yes, always. What do we need?
All right, how's this sound? It sounds pretty good to me. Great. So this slide shows the, uh, assumptions about when we might borrow this money in order to finance a whole project. As you can see, the current year is fiscal year 19, so we would be looking at, uh, kind of easing our way into the project, borrowing an estimated $4 million. A lot of that would go to support the architectural design engineering kind of work that has to go on in detail, uh, in response to the conversations about needs that, that John was talking about earlier with staff. We don't envision really spending on this project in earnest until the following year, when, uh, the bulk of the, the money would be borrowed and the work would happen, and then kind of wrapping it up in the third year. Again, these are estimated timelines. The numbers based on progress could, could shift slightly, but it's important to at least understand this phasing because it's going to play a role in the future numbers that you see. One other point I want to make, you can see it in the lower right-hand corner of the slide, is that all these scenarios assume a 30-year bond at 4% interest rate. Those assumptions are the product of a conversation I had with Rich Goodwin at the city about what interest rates reasonable to use, and also about the maturity, uh, period of the bond. It's important to understand that we're not asking you to vote for a 10-year, or 20-year, or 30-year bond or anything like that. Uh, in my conversations with Rich, it was clear that he looks at the market every year when he goes out to borrow to determine what type of maturity makes the most sense financially. So depending on the shape of, uh, the yield curve, which is a fancy way to say, interest rates at different borrowing lengths, you, uh, may find that it's more favorable to borrow for 20 years as opposed to 30 years. That's all a product of fluctuations in the bond market. So to be clear, we use the 30-year assumption. Uh, the infrastructure we're talking about building will, is clearly expected to last 30 years, so it's a completely appropriate maturity rate. But it is something that I would say we wouldn't be asking you to kind of commit to that. That's something that would be, a decision at any given point in time would be made, uh, you know, based on those existing market conditions. Okay, so, uh, the first slide here shows an estimated impact on a $250,000 home. That's a taxable value of $250,000. Some folks has suggested, oh, we could use a higher number, and certainly we, you can, you know, you could use any number. I think it's, uh, important for folks here to know that the source of that number is that it's, um, now it's slightly below, but it's approximately the median, uh, home value in Burlington, according to the US Census. And again, that's the taxable value, so, uh, that doesn't necessarily mean the value that the home will sell at. And one of the things you may recall from our budget presentations is the fact that Burlington's property is generally, for tax purposes, assessed at a much lower rate than its market value. That's why we have such a low CLA. And so, uh, it's just important to understand here that this is based on that actual taxable value, uh, home. So there are the three scenarios. You can see in the first year, we would probably need to, uh, do a little bit of spending or something, you know, there's maybe a minimal impact, it's hard to know. But really, when the project begins in earnest, we start phasing in with that, uh, $4 million. We're looking at that costing around $17 per year, uh, over and above whatever other spending we're doing, and whatever other the tax rate, uh, the taxes would be for the operating budget. So $17 we're phasing in, you can see, then it increases dramatically in the second, uh, year of increases when we do the bulk of the borrowing, and it increases somewhat further as we, uh, fully phase in all the borrowing. And it stays at that higher level for a number of years until we start actually paying off completely those bonds. So you can see, in fiscal year 51, it takes down somewhat. That's the first small bond being paid off, the one that generated that $17 now disappears from the tax impacts and so forth, until we reach, uh, completely having repaid everything in, in fiscal year 52, and, uh, being free of that obligation, uh, for the foreseeable future. Next slide, please. And here we, uh, did the same sort of analysis, but we based this on what, uh, an income payer could be capped at if they had $50,000 worth of income. And so there are a number of, uh, you know, many, many, uh, families in our city are paying their education taxes based on their income. So we wanted to provide a scenario here that shows roughly the same shape that you'll see, where we phase in the borrowing, it, it peaks and stays up, uh, at that high level until it phases out. You can see, obviously, by design, the, uh, people who are paying, uh, based on their income, that they're capped based on their income, are paying less. That's the whole point of income sensitivity, so that shouldn't come as a surprise to people to see that, uh, those folks wouldn't be paying as much. I, I just reiterated, and I won't linger on it, but all of these tax rate assumptions, uh, there's a complicated formula, we've talked about it on the annual basis. You should really just understand that, of course, I'm holding all of these other variables constant, but they won't be constant. In, in reality, we don't necessarily know how they will change, but for the purposes of not introducing too much variability in this, so you can really see the isolated impact of the amount that we choose to borrow, um, all the other variables are, are held So the other important, uh, element that came out of our conversations with the board to understand was what's the impact on the annual operating budget for the district? The operating budget is what needs to pay for the debt service that we, uh, on an annual basis. So this is how much we are repaying every year to, uh, accommodate this bonding. And as you can see, once again, we have the three scenarios laid out there. The $60 million scenario phases in and peaks at an impact of, of about $3.5 million. And then the $65 million plan peaks at about $3.8 million. And the $68.5 million plan comes in, a tick under $4 million a year. So that's, again, how much money in our budget every year we would be spending to repay the borrowing that we've done to finance the high school construction. This last slide is just to show you what a motion could look like, as to do choose tonight or, uh, a week from now to, to move this project forward. This was drafted by Joe McNeil. Uh, he wanted me to add this note at the bottom, which is to say that we, if, if the board desired, if, uh, we could add additional language, uh, to help communicate to the voters if there's intent to partially fund any of the project with other revenue sources, such as private donations, or, uh, budgeted surpluses or something, so we don't necessarily even have to specify what that would be. But if we, for example, were going to, uh, try to fundraise $5 million of a $65 million project, we would, of course, only be asking for the authority then to bond for the $60 million. The board may decide that it's a good idea to also, um, kind of communicate on the ballot that other component of the project that would be, uh, funded through another source. That's not required, that's just an option that's there for your consideration. So, um, that is the end of the financial pieces. I know a lot of this is somewhat familiar to folks because we've talked about it before, but at the same time, uh, the numbers look a little different because we've extended the maturity period based on some of the feedback that we had from our earlier conversations.
Okay. Questions around the BHS portion?
Commissioner Wade?
Nathan, thank you. There were some slides I thought you were going to present on the total impact, um, of all of our bonding, not just the incremental BHS.
Yep, uh, we have presented that as well, and if we want, it's not part of this presentation, um, but I did create those, this but I did create those this afternoon, so we can, we can pivot to those now, or if we want to kind of talk about what's just come here, and then kind of pivot to that later. We can, it's just, it's not, wasn't part of the pre-planned presentation, but I did create a couple, so we have.
I'll defer to the chair.
Yeah, I think it would be the perfect timing to do that.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to, not to miss what Nathan's just gone through, people might have some questions specifically before we go to the bigger picture, I thought might be in isolation, and then do the comprehensive for people who had questions, then that might be an easier way to sort of take it all in.
I understand.
Commissioner Violet?
Thank you for the presentation. The current scenario that we saw tonight was based on a thirty, thirty-year bond?
That's correct.
And are, is that the longest bond life length available to us, or is there anything longer that would?
I believe, I would defer to Rich Goodwin about that. I believe, I mean, you, you can borrow for longer than that. I'm not sure if that is at all typical for municipal ballots, so, but it is possible. In the world of finance, they do, you know, people do bond for longer than thirty years. It's just, it's not standard, but yeah.
Given, given the useful life of the building and given the tax payment implications, it may be something worth, like, looking at.
Right, I mean, I guess I would come back to what I mentioned earlier, which is I would caution the board not to focus on that, because at least for the time being, when the school district borrows, as you know, we are borrowing under the city's general obligation. They, technically, it's the city who's going out to issue bonds and promising its full faith and credit, so it's really, while I'm sure they would, Rich would be happy to entertain our ideas, I would generally defer to his familiarity and experience with the market to determine what's the best period to borrow. It's not always the case that simply by extending the term of your borrowing that you're actually paying less per year. Again, that depends on the vagaries of the bond market and the shape of the yield curve, and whether or not bond investors are pricing in more or less uncertainty into future years. So, that's probably exactly what you wanted to hear tonight, and I'm happy to go on, but if there's other questions, I'll also take them.
Commissioner Curry?
Are you familiar with an energy efficiency bond?
I'm not familiar with an energy efficiency bond, no. I mean, I know of them, but I don't, I don't have any expertise in them.
So, so again, it goes back to create, calculating a payback analysis on the efficiency, so that, you know, the more, the higher the efficiency, the higher the savings, and that becomes a revenue stream for a municipal to repay the bond. Other, I believe, Barry, other municipalities in Vermont are doing this, certainly other municipalities outside of Vermont are doing this, so.
I guess I'd like to ask, again, you know, I think we, I think we want to be very intentional in our process with the city, and that should really begin with setting up meetings with Chair Wright. You mentioned the mayor, and that would not be appropriate. We would want to go through the chair and ask about, you know, the way the councilors would like to engage some of these issues because they really involve multiple departments. So, you know, I guess I'd be interested in hearing back about, you know, how we can leverage the city's capital goals as well, including integrated grid, energy efficiency bond, what the opportunities are, and have a more formal process that the councilor can instruct us on.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Avery?
I know that you already told us to not worry about this, but two weeks ago, you presented us with a payback model of paying it back over twenty years, and now we're being presented with a payback over thirty years. So, the total that we'd be paying back over twenty-eight, twenty years is eighty-eight million, and if I add up what you just had in the previous slide, it's a hundred and five million. So, that's kind of a big difference, and don't you think that matters to the homeowner? And I know we're leaving it up to the city's guy who gets the bonds, but even as a homeowner, when I borrow money to, to purchase my own home, I look at that, like, am I going to pay off the loan in thirty years or fifteen, and how much is the bank getting from me over the amount of time?
Right, so, at any given amount of borrowing and any given interest rate, the further you extend your term of borrowing, the more you're going to pay, because someone's loaning you that money, they're providing you that service for longer. So, you're absolutely right about that. The point I was making earlier is that, in my conversations with Rich, it was clear that he's looking at that, and he's saying, well, if a thirty-year bond is going to cost a hundred million, and a twenty-year bond is going to cost, you know, significantly more or less, he's considering that. But you're absolutely right that, again, for any of those fixed amounts, the longer you spread the term of repayment out, the more in total you're going to pay in interest because you're borrowing, you're using that money longer. And so, yeah, for the sixty million dollars, I kind of ran these, the sixty million dollars, you could be looking at a total cost by the time you're finished repaying, you know, more like a hundred and four million, a hundred and five million dollars, rising up to, for the high, at the high number, the sixty-eight-point-five, something closer to a hundred and eighteen million dollars. That's obviously higher than if I use those same assumptions at twenty years. The, the counterweight to that is that you are reducing the annual cost, and you're further extending that repayment over the life of the infrastructure. So, you know, again, it's, it is true, there are different costs. I don't think that that is the kind of most determining factor in, in the equation here, but it's worth understanding for everyone that, yes, the longer you bond for, the more interest you're going to pay over the life of that loan.
Another piece is that we haven't really gotten to the conversation around other strategies to subsidize our debt service, right? Because we've had some conversation around fundraising, there's, we've had surpluses over the last few years, we haven't talked about developing a reserve fund that would go to that annually, or, you know, those kind of strategies or conversations the board would want to take on once you've secured the bond and say, okay, how do, what do we do from year to year? Do we want to come up with strategies to pay it off a lot sooner, or, you know, or other? Those conversations are still to be had going down the road.
Commissioner Fisher?
So, I think it is a good, excellent point when we're talking to people who are really taking the numbers and adding them up on the back of a napkin, right? And so, we need to be consistent in our messaging when we're informing and educating the community about, is it going to be a twenty-year, thirty-year? What, what example, what sample data are we going to use, right? There are other going to be people who are going to look at any number that we put up and freak out, right? But the people who are really doing the math, we need to be consistent in our messaging.
Right, so, I would suggest at this point, we use a thirty-year figure, that's what we presented tonight. If folks want to change that, we can rerun all the numbers, certainly at twenty years, but I think that thirty years is probably more, you know, see, based on the earlier conversation we had, it seemed like people were more interested in the thirty-year approach because it makes the annual impact on, on budget and taxes, you know, somewhat, somewhat less. But again, you know, the market conditions will largely dictate the choice that's made during any given bonding.
So, I think it's time we'll pivot to the overall debt.
Okay, Carson, if you, I sent you those slides.
Yes.
Yes, you got it. Okay, so, the next two slides are an attempt to kind of illustrate the combined impact of any of these BHS scenarios with our other, what I call other debt, by which I mean both the debt that the school district already has for borrowing and work that's already occurred, as well as the projections about what we will be borrowing in association with our capital deferred maintenance plan. That's the thirty-nine million dollars over ten years. So, what you see is a category for BHS renovation, and you can see this is the combined annual debt service amount. Again, that's the amount that we need to include in our budget to pay for all of the borrowing costs. So, as you can see, what I did, I put the first year, and then I put the various peaks, the high points, which, again, continue for about twenty-eight or so years, twenty-eight to thirty years, but you can see what that, when we reach that peak, and what that peak amount is by scenario. And so, as you can imagine, the more money we borrow, those peaks each creep up from about nine-point-two million to nine-point-seven million dollars. And on the next slide, you see a similar display, but this shows the percentage change in the tax rate based on the debt service associated with each of these categories of bonding. So, you can see in that first year, we're talking about the debt driving a percentage increase of a little over two percent, and then you can see, once we reach those peaks, again, the other debt kind of stays, it, it doesn't, you know, change by scenario, but based on the high school scenario, you can see that the rate increase ranges from five-point-six to about six-point-four percent, and then you can see on the right, the combined impact of all of that debt, and that's, again, vis a vis the FY nineteen tax rate. And once you've paid off all of that debt, you would find yourself with a tax rate that's about four percent lower, all else being equal. That's because even right now, in the FY nineteen budget, we pay about three-point-eight or so million dollars worth of debt service. So, there's already some impact that once you're done paying for everything, you're actually below the tax rate you're at today, again, holding all those other variables constant. So, those are the two slides that kind of show a little bit of the combined impact with, with the other capital improvements that, that are already underway or are envisioned.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
So, ju, just to be clear, you showed the debt service of the other debt, but the other debt consists of our twenty-nine million in current debt, plus the thirty-nine million in total deferred maintenance bonding over the next ten years.
Right.
Plus the sixty to sixty-five to sixty-eight million for the high school. And so, also, just to put it in context, our budget presently is about, our operating budget, about eighty-five million, three-point-three of which is debt service presently.
So, more like three-point-seven. I noticed where you came up with that number, but if I actually add it up, I think I just need to update my little variance report narrative, but yeah.
Fair enough, so three, three-point-sevens are current.
What's four hundred thousand between friends, right?
But, yeah. Then it goes up to about nine-point-five, nine-point-seven at its peak, so just using around numbers from about four to ten.
Mm-hmm.
It's incremental, six million dollars in our budget we have to find for this at its peak years.
Right.
Okay, I just want to contextualize that.
Commissioner Curry?
Um, but just to clarify, is that an incremental gain of, like, two million each year, or is that a drawdown all at once?
Uh, no, so, if we can, Carson, if you can just make the, let's see, the best slide to see is probably the first of these two. So, again, the idea would be, we would, the first, the first year, actually, do we have a better slide? We don't have a better slide in the other presentation, let me just look over Marty's shoulder here, I can't remember.
See if you can find that, but, yeah, I know your question, you're right. It is, it is incremental, right? And Nate has sort of highlighted the peak at the highest, I know Jeff understands that, right? So, we, I think he had another slide previously that showed that year one is minimal, year two is three million.
It's like a curve.
It's a curve, right, and then it starts to go down, so.
Thirty years.
Right.
So, yep, so, this slide doesn't include the impact of the other debt, but it just illustrates the kind of ramping up and, and down that you can see. And so, a little bit different than if you add in the other debt, that kind of peak occurs at a slightly different time, but you can see, really, what we're talking about is a few years, it gets scaled up, and then it stays, we've kind of, we're fully borrowed, so to speak, at a certain point, and we, and we are just repaying all that debt, and as we start to retire that debt, it starts to inch down. The difference between, you know, again, if I was to graph this, this one would look a little different than the other one, because the, the other, if we add in all the other district debt that we have, some of that gets repaid at different periods of, of time, so the curve is not quite as smooth as just, you know, a thirty-year bond, that's, that's all we have going on, but, but essentially ramps up and down, and we can, you know, prepare kind of illustrations of that, particularly once we know what scenario we're, we're pursuing.
Yeah, so, I guess I'd like to request that we do get a more detailed graphic of the, the payoff, the drawdown, the incremental growth, and the, you know, assumed tax impact on the two-hundred-and-fifty, if you could just chart that.
Like, you want to see this?
Like a graphic, you know, a graph.
Or a graph, okay.
Yeah, so it would show.
Yep, yeah, we had, we had some graphs, so I can recreate those.
Yep.
Based on other scenarios.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Violet?
Uh, yes, I guess, when I think about this, we, we're committed, or we, it seems like we need to do at least thirty million dollars worth of work to the high school. You know, we can decide if we want to do sixty or sixty-five or sixty-eight million dollars as well. So, in terms of the differential, that we really, you know, if we're going to operate a high school here in Burlington, it seems like we're going to have to increase our debt service by at least, like, half of that, that is six million, so we have, like, a three-million-dollar increase regardless. So, it's really that three-million-dollar differential between the minimum amount of work that we can do and the renovation to the high school as presented, really, that is, is the difference that we're, we should be discussing, really. I mean, I just want to point that out, because it's not like we have a choice of doing, staying where we are at three-point-seven or going to nine. We really, we're, it seems like we're, either way, we have to somehow take on an additional, at least three million dollars worth of debt service.
Commissioner Curry?
So, I mean, I think that we, we're talking a lot about, like, messaging and making all these different requests, and we seem to be focusing on this very technical level of tax impact without, you know, I think, a discussion of the, the broader context of what we're talking about, so, you know, I think it's just a little misguided to continue, to focus on tax impact when what we're really talking about is, you know, really trying to correct for decades of deferred maintenance and a completely inaccessible building that's out of compliance legally and a failure of safety and security programming, and being very energy inefficient, and overall, looking at losing ground, just, I think, for the city's economy and the city's economic strength. I mean, we're really talking about, you know, one of the city's significant assets as a very central part of our community for many, many families and the next generation, and, you know, I think, for me, the consideration is not about, you know, three hundred dollars of additional tax impact and how much, you know, that is an important discussion to have, and how to manage that, and looking at other strategies for trying to reduce that impact, and support a lot of different strategies that can, you know, get, give us some, some, a little more wiggle room with capital campaigning and, and looking at some different alternatives. But for me, this conversation, you know, it's, I think if we want to have the technical conversation, that would be a good set aside time for next Tuesday when we can really get into this, and I think messaging is a big question. It's like, I think we want to all figure out where we stand personally on many of these issues, and there are many. So, you know, I'd just like to ask about what that process will look like going forward. Maybe the re-envisioning committee has discussed that, and I, I'd like to ask that next week, our meeting is kind of organized in a way that we take these issues one by one, so there's, like, site plan and building issues, there's tax impact and bonding issues, there's whatever other issues, you know, the rest of the district's capital plan, there's kind of like, it's, it's very complex, and there's messaging, there's outreach, all of that, and, you know, I'd like to have a very structured meeting so that we're not just all over the place with, you know, popcorning. So, that, that's my question for next week, and then I'm just wondering, in the re-envisioning committee, I'd love to see, or just some thoughts about how you all have thought about these issues so for, so far in terms of, you know, really helping the community understand the importance of this and the timing, the timeliness of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry, and I would speak on behalf of the engagement committee that, yes, those questions will be answered. That's what our meeting for Tuesday will be dedicated to BHS. We, go ahead. We have waited patiently with the district and its leaders for this presentation, and we are appreciative of it. Yes, it comes at a timeframe that, you know, we did pass the resolution in April, and this is when we're getting the information, and it is our job to have a thorough vetting of all that information as a board, so we've dedicated that night and supplemented it with the envisioning committee for next Thursday, so Tuesday, Thursday next. We understand this timeline, we understand the constraints, we are, again, working with the district leaders, and, and they are guiding us, but we, we completely take full responsibility as a board to find out the information that is, that is needed.
Mike, we have a scheduled diversity, equity, and inclusion committee meeting.
Yes, at seven. So, this is, we're going to do five, eight, or seven.
Okay, thanks. Oh, okay, thanks.
Tuesday.
Yep. Do you want to take an opportunity for board members to share any things, or do you want to just, or are we good?
I think if everyone agrees, I think we would wait for next week to be able to discuss that further.
I'm just thinking of some clarity around some, maybe it might be just general in terms of areas you really want us to come prepared to give you more information, because you've seen, you see the lot of information, right? But there still might be questions, but it might be some specific areas that you, somebody might be interested in a certain area, another might be another area that you'd want us to sort of gather more information to make sure that we can have a robust conversation around that.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Gulick.
Yeah, I'm trying not to talk a lot because we have a really loaded agenda. And, I mean, these, you know, 1 o'clock AM meetings are tough, so I'm trying to not speak. But having said that, I, per Richard Dean's communication to me, he asked me to speak to Tom Apple, who's been through this process down in Brattleboro, I believe. So I had a nice, long chat with him. He was very informative. And one of the things he did recommend is that we speak to someone in the economic area about what kind of benefits a new high school has to a local economy. There, apparently you can quantify this and you can come up with number in datas as to the outcomes of a, of a new school. So I, and I did mention that to Russ, I think, when we met a couple of weeks ago. But I think that's something that we should look into. And he did give me the name, Mr. Choffee is someone, Frank Choffee, apparently, of the Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation, is someone that we should speak to and see if he can give us a little bit of information as to positive impacts of a new high school.
Commissioner Barlow?
Um, yes, I was just going to suggest that we all look at the presentation once it's available on Board Docs and funnel our questions to either Commissioner Gulick or Chair Wob.
Yep, thank you.
By, by some time that you decide.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to add that level of detail, you know, also take the initiative to go to, there's a lot of links there that had a lot of detailed information that couldn't be put into a quick PowerPoint presentation. So, so take, take the opportunity to review that, that level of detail that's available in all of those links.
Thank you.
Commissioner Currie?
So I did want to ask that Black River be available at all our meetings and all the meetings with the council and the public so that we can ask detailed questions about the site plan. I do have a lot of questions about the site plan, so I'm not really sure when the appropriate time is to raise them. You know, like are you continuing to change the site plan, or are you just sitting with it? Or, you know, what's the process for commissioners to engage in a more technical level? I, I just have a real estate development background for 20 years, and I have a lot of questions about it. But I don't want to, you know, that's not appropriate for this forum.
I can kind of briefly answer that, and John can weigh in if he wants. But a lot of the site changes are going to be driven by the stormwater design. We just recently did some test pits a couple of weeks ago. So we have pretty good knowledge of what we're working with. But definitely with stormwater designs, they're, that in itself is a work in progress. So you can't just necessarily say, let's, let's put a gravel wetland here without going through that, that level of design to make sure that it meets the requirements as well as looking at, you know, all of the areas that are fundamental. So it may change on different scenarios such as that. It, it may change, we may decide that we need a traffic study. So it could change, you know. Many factors of that design change will happen through, after the bombing.
Okay, so I guess next week I would like to have a, some time to really understand that dynamic between the stormwater and the traffic circulation pattern and the parking lot out back and the ledge and the risk exposure there.
That's good. So I think that's what I was alluding to. If you have questions around certain particular areas, if you want to phone them to the chair, that way we can make sure we have the right staff there, we can have a really good conversation around that. So we look forward to those kind of questions.
So it sounds like we'll try to get our civil engineer to also participate in that, you know, given the short notice. I don't know if it'll be available or not.
If we can have it, but it, I think it'll be helpful if people can generate their thoughts, sooner the better. Because then it gives us time to tap the right people to be there to give the right responses and give you the information you need. So I guess within the next couple of days, if you want to, the PowerPoint will be up tonight, so take a look at it again. And then if you want to generate questions to the chair, and then once we receive it, we'll know who we need there to have those conversations.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let me just confirm that, I apologize. That's next Tuesday, correct?
Tuesday, yeah.
Yep.
Russ?
For anyone in the audience, there is one cheater with those tax implications on the center table back here. And the PowerPoint presentation will be online after the board meeting on our website and on Board Docs. So please take a look and submit questions through the forum.
Thank you.
Good news.
Thank you.
Good news, good news.
Good news.
Yep.
Good news. In the interest of time, we had a graphic I wanted to share with you last week. And I had the opportunity, and I'll send it in an update this week so you can have a look at it. Had an opportunity to go to Baltimore with about 30, close to 25 Burlington youth. And it was in commemoration of an event that had happened for over 40 years. And this was sort of an anniversary, kind of culminating in an event. And it was an exchange of basketball players from here in Baltimore for many, many years. And many of the players, in particular on that side, have gone through, you know, being a youth and gone through college and have gone to the NBA and have gone to business and done all kinds of amazing things. And many of our community members who were here in Burlington, who are now senators, teachers, lawyers, all kinds of, in the community, in very much different aspects, were part of that as well, too. And our very own Joe McNeil, he was one of the coaches 30 years ago. So there were coaches from, from back then. And so it was a great reunion for, for Joe. And I wish I had the graphic to show you, but it's a good graphic with our kids from both sides. And they had a banner that was signed from Burlington students and Baltimore students. And our students this year got to sign the back of the banner. And if you saw the banner, there'd be names you could recognize now that were youth, you know, 30 years ago. So it was a really exciting opportunity to, to go with these students and share this experience with them. And we're now looking to be the host for next summer, to have them come to Vermont. Because they did do that exchange 30 years ago, they used to come back. So looking forward to that. So that was a good piece of experience and good news for, experience for our kids as well.
Very cool. Are we done?
We're done.
Good.
Great, thank you. Moving on.
Can we do a 10-minute break?
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to ask about the Chinese visitors, because I'm curious about what happened and are we, can we expect some more? I don't know.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yeah, so yeah, it was successful. We, our coordinator did a very good job of facilitating at the last minute to try to find spaces for them. And it was very successful getting them over here for the summer. We do have a number of students who are interested in coming to BHS for the entire year, which is great because that also means revenue for us, and we're looking to expand. As a matter of fact, I think I have a meeting this week with, with the organization we're working at to establish a better platform that'll be enticing for, for students to come to Burlington.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Just a comment, you said that the coordinator did a good job. I've received a number of comments from constituents that it did not appear, that it was, a good job was done to ask for host families with less than a month's worth of time.
10 days.
10 days? Did not, did not, did not seem like it was a good job.
Yeah, I, I think she did a good job in terms of responding at the last minute to, because the kids were coming. And you're right, it was short notice, but she was able to find accommodation for those students, so.
So, so I guess the question is, why did that happen? And, and, I'm sorry, I don't need to know why. I'm just looking for whoever was in charge to do a better job next time. Because I think I've heard a couple of families that, that's a great thing, but I can't do it at the last minute. Right? They were really interested and they wish a couple of months' lead time, they absolutely would have been, you know, signing up for more information.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a 10-minute break. Okay, so we'll come back in. Thank you, everyone. So do you want to, do you have service for her or just tell?
Oh.
Did she want to be on this?
What do you mean, it wasn't on, we warned it.
No. It wasn't the attachment.
That's okay, the attachment doesn't have to be.
All right. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the personnel and positions. And Commissioner Currie has a report to share with the board.
Okay, well, you know, I've, I've written two resolutions, but they're not available for your perusal right now. So I'd like to just talk about one of them. If you give just a couple of minutes, I'll go quickly and explain. What I'd like to do is explain the purpose, the process that Kathy and I went through to get the information we're looking for. And then share some information that I have digested since Monday, and then ask for your advice about where to go from here.
All right, I'll put you on.
If that's okay. So I, I think I mentioned earlier that as co-chairs of the Personnel Committee, we're interested in establishing baseline information about, you know, just who are the personnel in BSD. So we've asked, we've asked HR to provide that information in the form, and I have it in the form of a resolution, but you'll see it, it's very precise and detailed information about what we're looking for. We met with, we sent a request, and then we met with Nikki Fuller. And we had a nice discussion with her and asked her to present us the information, whatever she had, because the timeline was kind of pressuring her a little bit. So on Monday, two packets were available, one for me and one for Kathy. Now Kathy's out of town right now, and she doesn't have that information yet. But I went up to get it, and I have the information that what we, some of the information that was asked for, and I want to just show it to you briefly. Basically, we're looking for, you know, how many employees are there, who works where, and what are their assignments for the year? So we have this baseline information. And as I said earlier, you know, this really gives me insight into the complexity of the district. And the number that I have counted basically is 1,084 employees, based on the information that was given to me, and Kathy has a duplicate of that. But I want to just show you what this is. So what I received was, I received nine lists. The first one is, are the teaching assignments. Now, they're not labeled, and they're not numbered, they're not categorized in any way. But the first list is 395 teaching positions. The second list is, has 175 names listed, and it focuses on food, summer, SOAR, and something called ESY. I'm not sure what that is, maybe someone does. The third list looks like a list of principals and director, no, excuse me. The third list is a list of district employees, not necessarily licensed teachers, and it contains 110 names. Names like, I mean, jobs like district director of grants, senior site director, technology intervention specialists, that. Because there are 110 of those. And then the fourth list I got are 16 directors and assistant principals and principals. The fifth list is a list of guidance and administrative assistants and people like that, number five. And there are 25 on that list. The sixth list has 164 names in one column, I can't read it. I think it was kind of funny. I tried to read it, even with my bifocals. But there are, I used a ruler and figured out that there are about 165 names on that list. The seventh list has 110 employees, and basically it's after-school employees, 110. So that was kind of illuminated. The eighth list is guidance also, excuse me, number eight is custodians, there are 53 of them. And then the ninth list contains 35 names of employees in the food service district, okay? So I just wanted to show you that because, because, you know, this is the information, how I received it in that order, okay? So now in addition to that, because we asked specifically for job descriptions, I got a stack of photocopies. And in this were 100, 193, excuse me, 195 job descriptions. And they were presented in this order. And basically, I'm trying to figure out what's, you know, who's doing what and where they are, what the job descriptions are. So I just went through them all, and I made a list of what they are. So again, there's no apparent order to this. I don't understand how it's put together or how it's utilized in any way. But nevertheless, it is job descriptions. But again, I was surprised at the order. And so I see something that has to be done, is there needs to be some organization to all this information. But I'll get to that in a minute. Just to clarify what I said earlier, one thing I looked at were the coaches, and I counted, I counted 11 coaches. I was surprised. There are three behavioral, three middle school instructional, three instructional, arts magnet, SA magnet, elementary sustainability. There are 11 names listed with coaches next to them, okay? And I was looking for the description, because I've asked for this at several different board meetings. I've asked for job descriptions of coaches. In this packet, there are two. One is the IAA arts coach. The other is a general coach description. Looked, it looked like it was hastily produced because there were sentences that are incomplete. And the requirements of being a coach really surprised me when I looked at it. That one, I looked at detail because I was specifically looking for coach job descriptions. So there are only two, as far as I can tell, even though there are 11 listed. So that, that was part of the problem. Now, so I have, I have recorded all of the job titles based on the job descriptions. And again, there are 195 of them. The problem is, it's, I can't line them up with any of the lists because the titles vary. There's no innate order to either, any of them. And what has to happen, as I see it as a, as a co-chair of the Personnel Committee, what has to happen is, these need to be matched to these job descriptions. So that's a huge task. And that's basically one thing I'm asking you is, where should this come from? Like, I haven't talked to Kathy at all, she's away, you know, so she hasn't, she doesn't have all this information yet. But, and we have our first curriculum and personnel meeting coming up the 10th of September. So what I plan, I don't know where you want to go with this. I don't know how the board wants me to proceed. Because, but I really feel that there needs to be some organized structure. Now, it would make sense for me to have the superintendent be the first one, you know, the first one. And maybe a hierarchical structure of, of job descriptions. It was really funny because I saw the superintendent description like in number 78 or something next to the bus drivers. So it, it doesn't make any sense, any sense to me at all. And I thought, well, maybe there is some sense that I don't understand. But anyway, that's what I've done, and that's what we've done so far. That's the information we have. Where do we go from here? I would like to proceed and through and find out, again, the questions that we want to know are, how many employees are there? Well, we have that, basically, 1,080-something. But who works where is not clear at all, because sometimes it's given on the, on the list, and sometimes it isn't. Most of the, most of the assignments are district, 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 or as assigned. So I have no idea, we have no idea as personnel people, who works where. That's one reason why we requested maps. And Kathy and I thought originally that we were going to have to go to the buildings and ask for lists of employees. And Kathy and I thought originally that we were going to have to go to the buildings and ask for lists of employees and make a list. I'm not sure that we have to do that. And then what are their assignments for school year 18, 19? We, I, we have no idea based on, on anything but these nine lists that I got, what they are. But they don't correspond to the jo, job descriptions. If that makes sense. So, knowing what I know about employees in the district, I mean, I can make assumptions that this job description, even though it's a different title, is actually that job that's listed differently on the list. I can make assumptions like that, which I think are probably accurate some, in some cases. But others I can't. So, I thought I would ask, yeah, what he wants me to do? What do you want me to do with all this information? How, well, how should it be organized or who should organize it? Because I'm willing to do it as a committee. In which case, that will be on the agenda, the first agenda item on September 10th will be, here's the information, let's start organizing it. And fi, our goal is to find out who works where and what their assignments are for this year. So, I figured that would be interesting. There'd be community members who'll be interested perhaps in helping me go through this. And that would, would be my intention. I haven't checked with Kathy on this yet. But that's one way of approaching it. I'm not sure if the district office wants to do anything beforehand with this information as it was presented in this kind of, in some way, in many ways, random order. But in, in, in the resolution that I wrote, I guess this supplies some of the information we asked for. But it needs to be organized and accessible for anyone who wants to look at it, I think. I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Superintendent O'Bang, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm not sure why the question is, it's not my committee.
Well, the question is, do you?
I don't know what that, sorry, the mandate of the committee, what the work is, to what purpose is this for? Because I could give you some guidance on that, but not sure what your mandate is.
Well, our mandate is to find out who works where in the district and how many of them are there? Like, where, where are the employees? Where, where are they on a daily basis?
If I, if I may, Commissioner Carey, I think we all as a board or active participants have, over the years, that question has been called, especially during negotiations. You know, the, the, this question deserves an answer. And, you know, we appreciate the work of the committee, we appreciate this initial step to giving us that information and that at the committee level. Uh, I think you're, it's not necessarily asking Superintendent O'Bang what to do with it, but, you know, guiding us in this process as a board. You know, the resolution was, and again, we can't be presented in a, in a timely fashion that we could all digest it, is that he's, this committee is looking for board support to say, do you agree with me that compiling this information is valuable? And in what format would it work for future boards to be able to? You know, obviously, there is not a system in place for this information. If there was, if we looked at it from a building level or from a district level, charts that we've asked, you know, even on the consent agenda, don't list. And for various reasons, there might be reasons why they don't list where they are, whether they're a district employee or a school employee. So, I think it begs the, the board, and we can have that conversation as a board, you know, what we, the question goes back to you, Commissioner, Commissioner Carey, what your committee, how you would like to present it for, for board use and for district use.
Well, we see it as a baseline information. We're a personnel committee and we need to first establish who the personnel are. So, that's the very first step. That's how I see it.
We'll start, Commissioner Barlow?
So, I asked this question once before and I never got an answer. But what's the function of a personnel committee? And is this just a, a justification for the formation of a committee? That I still don't understand the reason for having? I understand the need for an org chart. So, if we had an org chart that showed, you know, some, some accountability in terms of hierarchy, that's reasonable information. One of the things that we're going to end up creating though is a system that, whose purpose we're not exactly sure about, that has to be maintained and more time will have to be put into, like, when a new, a new employee comes in the district, we'll have to update the, this chart or whatever, or this list, or whatever database structure it ends up inhabiting. So, I just ask what the, you know, just from almost like an existential point of view, what's the purpose of a personnel committee? What, how does, how is that helping us with student outcomes? And the things that we as a board should be most concerned with, the high-level stuff?
I think, Commissioner Fisher?
Do you want to say something?
Okay.
So, I, I think that the board and its committees should be able to request information. And I don't think, you know, this was my committee, there's no way I would be working that data to make it a functional dataset. That's something that you request from the superintendent and his staff in a workable format. And I think that there's some basic information about district staff that should be accessible to everybody and the board. And thinking about policy governance, right? This becomes a report, right? Why not say, we want a report, this is the guidelines of the report. Superintendent gives us the first draft and we say, are you in compliance, are you partial compliance? Yeah. And then every year, we get the same report, right? I think that's how the system's supposed to work.
Commissioner Wick?
Yeah, I will directionally support Commissioner Carey. And I believe it's almost self-evident. In fact, I have a relative who works for the state of Vermont. And I would suggest, without knowing that the city of Burlington could also produce an org chart, fairly simply. And I would say any organization that doesn't want to or won't or can't produce some kind of an organization chart that could show us the district office and then school by school, who the personnel are at a given point of time, represents institutional incompetence. And I think we as a board have a right to that oversight. And I, I don't think we should continually question existentially. And I don't think tonight is the, the night to get back into the committee discussion. But I'm anticipating from others, the same sort of pushback for basic information. That relative I have who works for the state of Vermont said, I can't believe you don't have an org chart. When I worked for the state, we absolutely had one. We know exactly every position in every department and who to contact for what. This is not rocket science, this is basic competence of an organization. And I'm, I'm frankly tired of the pushback regarding oversight.
Commissioner Carey?
So, I, I believe what you're seeing is what's existed since the former superintendent was here. Um, that's what's on file. There was little transition between the former HR director and the new one. There was an abrupt transition. So, yeah, I agree with Mike. It's like, why not just ask the administration? I don't, I mean, to me, this kind of like is coming up out of the blue. Like, apparently, you all have had conversations about this, you know, with each other. But it, I wasn't aware you guys wanted an org chart. I, I support it, I don't think it's a big deal. Why not just ask the superintendent for it? I think the issue with job descriptions is the unions have, I mean, I guess that's a question is, how the interaction goes with the unions in terms of writing job descriptions and that sort of thing. It has to comply with the contracts. I, I know that our auditor did, um, a year or two, maybe two years ago, recommend more capacity for, in the business office or the HR office. And I don't think we've, you know, because we were in union negotiations, we cut admin, we cut $1.5 million out of admin so that we could preserve the increase for the union. So, you know, I think what you're seeing is five years of financial, you know, lack of solvency in trying to rebuild. And, you know, this is, to me, probably what existed in fiscal year 12. And probably nobody's tended to it for capacity reasons. You know, I think by the same token, we'd probably want to ask how many grievances, for grievance data. And look at, you know, that has, that has a timeline, that has a standard trajectory, that's where the HR capacity goes. Um, so sure, if we wanted to bring more resources to the admin office, I would support a consultant to come in and do an org chart, go through job descriptions, talk to the union. We could do it by union, we could do it by school, we could ask Essex what they do, we could ask Bunuski what they do, we could ask the state what they do, we could ask the city what they do. But, you know, someone's going to have to spend the time doing it at the expense of not doing something else. So, I guess I'd like to hear from the committee, what's the outcome you're looking for? And what is the trade-off you're willing to make in terms of what doesn't get done so that we do this?
Okay?
Yeah, so this, actually, this is not really complicated to me. And I, I wouldn't even, I don't know why I use the word incompetence or, you know, making those kind of statements. I'm just looking for exactly what is the purpose, what is, what that you need. What information are you actually needing and what's the purpose of that information? Because I know when you ask a question, the data is there for those, but it's in different forms. When I go on to the school site, you can see exactly, you can see, you go to staff directory, you can see everybody who works there. You click on it, tells them their, their description and everything, right? You can get all that kind of information. If you're looking for an organizational chart, we've always had an organizational chart. We have to update it annually because it changes. If that's the request in the board, then you just need to kind of just say, that's what you need it for and you want that. That's the information you, you need, right? And I know that you asked for the information in paper form, right?
Yes.
You asked for, so, we're moving to electronic. And we have software we just started last year to move everything, call records. So, every staff member is in that. So, our staff are now working on pulling reports from that, so if you want. So, I would have liked to have said, okay, well, let's do electronic report. And what is it that you actually, what's the purpose? Then we can give you the information in those groupings, if that's something that the board needs to, needs to see. I like it codified in a policy so we can do that same report every year. If that's something you want, you want, then we will do that. I think this is really not a good use of our staff's time at this time of year. We're trying to get ready for school and HR is packed with a lot of things to try to generate lists of things and it fluctuates. So, I don't think it's good use of our time at this, at this point. But if the board wants this kind of information, I don't think it's not, it's good information. Just sort of have a conversation, define it with a purpose for it. And we could give it to you annually, every year at a certain time and say, here it is. You want to know what the central office organization is? Yes, we have a chart, we have a phone list, we have everything, they're in different formats. We can produce that. It's not that complicated. Just define it and tell us what you want and give us the time to do it. This is not the time I would ask a charge to say, this is a priority, because I know they're dealing with a lot of different things. But it's something that can be done. It's information that I would want as a superintendent, right? When I, when I first came into the district, I said, how many staff do we have? They had a very difficult time giving me that answer. Because it wasn't organized in an electronic format. And things were, well, we got this person, this person. It took a while to get to a number that they felt confident in saying. But now that we've got the new software and we're trying to get everybody on electronic, every staffer we have gets paid through there. So, therefore, if you're paid, you're identified. And all our hiring process going forward are there. So, therefore, the job descriptions, everything are posted. Then we can keep that, right? So, we've just introduced that and we're working on that and that's where we want to go. This is not information that we need to hide or anything, or it's information that as superintendent, I, I want as well. I want to be able to go on to records and do a report. I want to know how many teachers are doing ESL. I should be able to pull that up and see that myself, right? So, it's not, it's not really that complicated. I really do think that we, we do, we've had a number of conversations. We really do need to shift the, the attitudes, really the attitude that we have. Like, we work to support you, right? Whether you have information or not has no benefit to me personally. We work to support you. So, if you have a goal and you're trying to define something in terms of improving staff goals and you need some data around it, you just need to say, this is what we're trying to do. Can you give us some data around that? Give us that so we know and we can, and we'll be able to produce that. That's not, that's, that's what, that's what we do, that's how we should be working, right?
Thank you. Well said. Commissioner Fisher?
So, I, I heard that we're, we were looking at the resolution today because you had said that the board needs to request information. So, if we want to do a regular report, right? We do a policy governance, we create a monitoring report. What about something ad hoc? And you just said, just let us know what you're working on. Is that something that we can do internally with you?
Well, Commissioner Carey has the documents, so obviously, we've complied. I know that Marty sent the building maps almost right away electronically, said, these are all our buildings. This is what he asked for, right? My concern is managing staff workload, right? So, if it's like, hey, you got a question from, from the board, right? You have that at your fingertips, send it out, give it to them. They say, oh, that's something I have to create, it's going to take, I'm dealing with this. Then I would say, sorry, we can't do that. Or if it's something that's going to be really onerous, then I'd say, okay, this is going to take some resources and some dollars. And I'd want to make sure that the whole board is engaged in this. And then I'd say, bring it to the board, make sure it's something that the board is in support of. But other than that, anytime we get a request, if it's something that, you know, we can respond to and we have already, why would we not give it, right? If we're working on the same team, we're trying to reach the, the goals, that's the thing. And I think we really have to make that shift. Because I don't feel that way. And my staff, I tell you, my staff, in the last couple of days, have said they've gotten some, some, some feedback that doesn't make them feel like, you know, they're getting the kind of support. And that, they don't want to work in that kind of environment. They don't want to work in that kind of environment. And I'm trying to tell them, no, just, people just don't understand yet. And give some time and build that trust and we'll be able to communicate and work together. We need to really make a shift and say, hey, this is what we're trying to achieve, this is what we need to get. And we're here to serve the board. That's my job, is to serve the board, right? If you want me to count donuts all day, hey, that's my job, I'll do it. I may not do it for very long, but that's what I'll do, right? It's like, there is no personal gain to me for, you know, to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to move on. So, Commissioner Carey, do you want to speak to the second?
Well, I just think, I'm surprised if, if I'm hearing that you don't think it matters that we have a, what is it, an ORT chart? I've never heard that term.
Organizational chart.
An organizational chart? I don't understand. And I'm thinking from a district standpoint, a Burlington School District standpoint, even 10 years from now. It makes sense in any $85 million organization to have a list of employees that's accessible and readily comprehensible, not what this is, not what this is. And again, I'm going to say, the purpose is to gather baseline information for the Personnel Committee, to find out how many employees there are in the district, number one. To find out who they are and where they're working and what their assignments are for this year. And that, once that's established, that can be easily changed. But it seems to me, this district is in remis in not having this information now, like any other organization. Like you're talking about the state or any other business would have that information. So, as a personnel person, you know, I see that this is the first time.
So, we've already heard this?
Pardon me?
We've already heard this, we have a payroll, we know how many people we pay.
Commissioner Carey's out of order.
Well, I think the, the other commissioners too. Could we please, the chair, please do her job?
Thank you. Commissioner Carey?
Was I out of order?
I think we, we belabor the point and I would like to, I asked you to move on to the second part, number B. Thanks.
The second resolution?
Second, you want, you wanted to, I, we talked about, we weren't presenting the resolution, but we, if you wanted to discuss and share with the board your work in discussing.
Well, that was it, I was going to focus on that.
Perfect, thank you. So, we will move on to the consent agenda. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm in, I'm in mistake, I made a mistake. Do you want to move on to 7B?
Okay. Commissioner Carey?
It had, it has to do with what we've heard from teachers ever since I've been on the board and very concerned community members. And it has to do with the assignments that have been cut from SA and Flynn. And it's a resolution that directs the superintendent to restore those positions. I don't want to go back over all the information that we heard because we've all heard it at length. I will, and, and part of the information I presented earlier had to do with that equity index, which still I have questions about. But the bottom line is, we're asking teachers to do the impossible at SA. We're setting up too many subjects for low achievement and we have lack of human resources to deal with it. The, the request, I'm, I'm not being clear, I'm sorry. The request is that one, one teacher, special educator, be restored to SA. Bearing in mind that of the 174 students there, 52 of them are on IEPs, that's 30%. 44 are EL students. the 174 students there, 52 of them are on IEPs. That's 30 percent. 44 are EL students and 10 of those are also on IEPs. And there's been this change from classrooms to multi-age slash, slash, multi-grade classrooms that lends to an impossible, well, it's not impossible because the teachers are gonna deal with it. They're gonna have to deal with it because school starts in two, in a week and a half. But the cuts that were made there, I believe need to be restored and before the beginning of the school year, which is in a week and a half. In, at the Flynn situation, it's the second grade overcrowding that we've heard from, from teachers, from special educators, from, uh, concerned community members. And that's the other position that I would hope the board would see needs to be replaced. Now, we heard from Victor and, and, yeah, earlier today that, um, that that decision might be made in September, not right away. So I'm not sure if that kind of makes us moot or not. But, you know, I personally believe, and I'm gonna continue to talk about this as we go through my tenure on the board, what we should be doing in this district is adding personnel. We have, we have a very challenging population, especially in certain schools. We should be, as a board, purposefully adding personnel every year to every building.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerry.
All right.
No discussion?
Commissioner Wick?
Yeah. I will support Commissioner Kerry's sentiments, um, especially because it's my understanding that at SA, we've got multi-age in grades one and two this year and three and four this year. And the fifth grade is on its own and the kindergarten's on its own. Champlain Elementary School, which I have much experience with, just got rid of multi-age after two to three years because it, it doesn't work. It's not workable. It's a disservice to the kids, in my opinion. And so I just want to express that I, I support the sentiment of Commissioner Kerry on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerry.
I support Commissioner Kerry on this as well. Um, and I've spoken to some of the teachers at SA and they had to restructure. And I don't know what the, um, the equity index reassignment of a position, if that's already been done or, um, but I know they had to combine, they have three 1-2 classrooms and three 3-4 classrooms. And when you have combined age classrooms, you can't teach fourth graders third grade math or third graders fourth grade math. You still have to separate out these kids and teach them the appropriate age level, grade level math. So the way things have worked out is that one of the teachers is gonna have something like 32 students for fourth grade math.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerry? Um, yeah, I, I totally get the experience as a board member when you hear, um, from staff and teachers who are grappling with a, a change that is going to make their, change their lives and possibly make it difficult. Um, we heard that from IAA a couple of years ago and their issues haven't been solved. We heard that from a lot of IAA parents. Um, and they did gain one position, but their ratios are still, um, poor in comparison to the need, very high needs at IAA. Um, so just from kind of a data perspective, I think it's important that your committee really dig in with Victor and understand, you know, the need for that flexibility because particularly between SA and IAA and the old North End, there's a lot of changes as families move in and enrollment changes out after September 1 or whatever, you know, the start of school is. So I would ask that you, you know, work with Victor and really understanding that. Um, I would just share that my family moved my younger son out of private school to go to SA because there were multi-age classrooms. It was a best, best practice called looping. And he, and, and we saw a really positive experi- we had a really positive experience in SA because of multi-age classrooms. It allowed him to read at the third grade level where he was and do math at the fourth grade level. It allowed for, um, kids to move around. There's, there's a number of adults, no adult ever had like 30 kids per class. There's a number of adults. Thank you. And there were coaches and we will have the coaching model. So my experience was really different. Um, and it was associated with a model called looping, which means to keep, kids have developed a bond and then they have that bond when they go back in the fall. Um, so that worked really well for my family. Um, so I guess I just ask for, you know, I think it's a, it's the right question and I get the sentiment around the, experiencing the emotion behind it. Um, I guess I would just ask for people to consider balancing that with data and best practice and the limited resources. If you want to increase personnel and personnel, you know, and direct instruction, where else do we cut? That's the question facing everybody in two months when we start talking about the budget. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Um, I'll say that I'm, I'm really concerned that if the board starts delving into delineating instructional positions and where they go on an individual basis. I think that is a really slippery slope and it could lead to the board getting, um, you know, campaigns from different, uh, parents and communities within the district fighting for resources and, and coming to us. And so, um, I, I need to understand, Commissioner Kerry, why this is the right thing for the district and why we should start to do this type of thing.
And I'm gonna ask-
And, and not, not here. This is, this is the work that needs to happen outside of a board meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Your comments. We will move on to item-
Superintendent, I raised a-
Oh, sorry.
Um, yeah, so I, the, just a quick, just comment on, on this particular issue. Um, one, I understand the concerns in terms of, from board members. And of course, I know people have many connections in the community, both with staff as well as key members. And there's a lot of empathy there in terms of when you hear the challenges that individuals are dealing with. I would say that the, from my perspective, I think the board is struggling, um, in trying to achieve its goals through an enterprise process. To pick one school or two schools and do that, we have multi-age, multi-age in many of our schools that haven't raised as, as an issue. And if the board wanted to get rid of multi-age, then they should do that through the budget process and say, make sure you come back with a budget that ensures there's no multi-age in every, but to pick one or two, I agree with Commissioner Fisher, that you're gonna get, um, continuous lobbying and people will come directly to you when they feel there's a need. And there is a need, but we have to look at a systemic approach and be able to, to balance that. I would also say that one of the things I fear, if the board goes down this route, that you will, um, disempower our administrators who are, who are on a daily basis responsible for the supervision, evaluation, and the programming in our schools. And they're the ones that are gonna get the ultimate say in terms of the, um, the allocation and the program with the resources that we have, right? And, uh, we've had the conversations and we said, this is what, this is the plan we're gonna do. So if I go back and say, well, the board's decided to do this, without them having really the opportunity to, to decide that as, as a group, that's gonna send a clear message in terms of, um, how they need to operate. And, uh, you'll get a lot more phone calls for sure. People will say, this is how you get things done, is you call your commissioner and that's what, that's, that, that's what you do, right? And this is what you'll, you'll get. So just a caution, um, something to think about.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to the item number eight on the consent agenda. All the items are posted. So is there any items the board would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Commissioner?
Yep.
I know it's, it's getting late, so I, I'm not sure that I will. But I assume everybody's seen the licensed employment contracts and the routine financial reports. I, I won't do it tonight, but there's gotta be a venue, I think, to educate us, many of us new board members, on these warrants that we're approving by consent without any discussion. Um-
Yep.
All right. Then let me just pull that one and maybe it would just be a, a minute or two. Just because I, I believe we're, we are actually approving some very large dollar value items and it's probably routine, but thank you.
So Carson, could you please just put up one of those warrant reports, maybe, um, I guess it doesn't really matter. I'm trying to think which one might be more useful. Let's do the June, the June 1.
All right. So before we do that, I'm gonna ask, is there anyone else who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda?
So are we approving all the minutes from the past meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Well, can I ask that my name be spelled correctly, please? Or incorrect on all of those? Okay.
Well, that takes us an email. I'm happy.
We're rid of an I. I just realized it today. I just noticed it today.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to be spelled-
I understand as a Carson.
All right. So we are not pulling anything from the consent agenda, but we're asking, uh, Nate to walk us through one of the June or July, February team financial, or the-
Is that the one?
Yeah, the team financials.
Sure. Yeah. So, uh, so just a quick, um, bit, uh, so the, this is one of those areas and Joe, I think at one point was, uh, called upon to weigh in on this because at one point, uh, shortly after I started, I said, why is the board doing this? This seems like a waste of everyone's time. And the answer was, well, by statute, they have to actually approve these. And, uh, but, well, as you can see, you know, you're, you're approving the, these lists. These are, um, amounts that we paid, uh, over the course of the month, either in payroll or accounts payable. So you're seeing it primarily because you have to actually take action on it by law. But, um, but really what you're simply looking at here is a set of either accounts payable, uh, check runs that we do. You can see that we, we essentially do that once a week. And that's why in that column, you see those big numbers. Uh, 1.1 million dollars is the first one on June 6th. And you can see then there's some smaller numbers and some bigger numbers. You might naturally wonder, why does it fluctuate so much? The major reason for that is because we pay certain types of bills, like our, our benefits, like to Blue Cross or to Cigna for dental, those sorts of things. Uh, we pay them once a month. So some weeks, we have really big sums that go out to, uh, entities like that. Or we pay the city retirement, make our quarterly contribution or something of that nature. In other weeks, we don't. We're just paying bills for things that were ordered. Um, you know, it might be school supplies or, or maybe payment to a contractor or something like that. So that's what accounts payables are. Those are payments to, um, entities that are not part of the Burlington School District. And then the others, uh, that are much more frequent, uh, are the payroll warrants. There are, we, we run a number of different payrolls. We've just consolidated one of them, but we still have a lot of different payrolls associated with our different bargaining units. And one of the things that we tried to achieve over the last round was to gain more flexibility in some of our bargaining, uh, agreements so that we could start to consolidate some of these payrolls because it's definitely not best practice to be constantly running payroll and to have your payroll staff constantly on a deadline. That's the recipe for burnout. But in any event, that's the reality that we live in right now. And the larger payrolls are typically our teacher and para payrolls who are getting paid. Um, and then the smaller ones vary. For example, the first one on that list I checked is, uh, kind of our, uh, kind of maintenance and hourly staff that gets paid, uh, every two weeks. They get paid on a Friday, I believe. And then like our teacher para payrolls run on a Wednesday, I think on the opposite week. So there's a lot going on there for sure. You'll notice a big number, uh, almost near the bottom of, of the list. It's a $3 million number. That's because when, uh, the school year ends, uh, Burlington sends its teachers home with, I forget if it's three or four, I think it's three paychecks this year that are their last three checks. Some districts kind of meet that out over the course of the summer or something. In our case, we, virtually, it's direct deposit, but we give them all of that, uh, of that money for the summer. So they get it, uh, right up front. And, uh, then there's miscellaneous payrolls that are sprinkled in there. Those are actually most frequent this time of year because we are paying some of those things that, that Steve mentioned, like SOAR or ESY. That stands for extended school year. So it's summer school in effect. So we have, um, those types of costs that are not typical over the course of the year, as well as if we find a situation where someone, uh, started working or something, you know, let's say, they started working, their pay was, uh, calculated inaccurately or something like that, we try, you know, we try to fit into the next payroll if possible. But if we believe that that's kind of too far to reasonably ask someone to wait, we will certainly go and run a special payroll for them. Um, and so there's a lot of different things that go into those little miscellaneouses. They're usually not that much. Sometimes they're bigger, like when we are, for example, processing our payout for people who decline our health insurance, but they get a, uh, payback for doing that. And so sometimes those, those are like bigger numbers. I think that, uh, $30 million figure or so at the end there is, is that one. And the $226,000 figure above it, I believe, is our kind of golden handshake that retiring teachers, uh, get for their new sick leave. So those are, it's a quick run-through. Obviously, it doesn't tell you every detail about every one. There's huge binders. You know, that could be inspected if you were so inclined to make an appointment with me.
Thank you so much, Nathan.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, so I would like to make a motion, um, that all the items on the consent agenda, um, we'd like for approval first.
You, you were looking for someone to make a motion?
Yes.
I so, I so move.
Just here a second. Liz, uh, thank you. Commissioner Kerry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then the motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the committee report for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So please feel free to read the minutes. It was, uh, we had a great little meeting. We had, um, Monica and I and Karen Rubin Mitchell, who left, and Tyler Doggett. And was anyone else there? No.
That's it.
We had a lot of conversations, um, and it's all in the minutes. Karen was looking for some very specific stuff. So I would encourage people to read that because it wasn't really stuff that the committee could deliver. A lot of it was about the pre-K, um, motion, resolution, and follow-up instructions to the superintendent to abandon the project. She was not happy with that. As well as bullying, I remember. We, we actually, we got some great info from Karen because she spent the year working in the schools. So, um, that was really interesting and it helped inform our next meeting. Great. And you have determined the next meeting is Tuesday at 7? Um, we haven't talked about it directly. Um, so we could talk with you about that. Yep.
Well, we're still trying to get Sparks to be on the agenda.
Okay. All right. We'll discuss that. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is to, uh, move into executive session. So a motion to consider executive session under 1V SA 313A, 1A, B, C, E, and F because premature general public knowledge will put the district at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the following, uh, one or more personal matters. And then item D, which was added, a motion to go into executive session for 1V SA 312 to discuss preparation for collective bargaining.
I so move.
Thank you.
And, uh, request that Nathan Lowery be a part of the executive session as-
A second? Second to that request. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?